Yeah, did you hear? But they got him out, right? Or one did die?
I think they said Trail.
Is it Trail?
No. Okay. Counselor Thatcher.
Now we've got all the good news on there.
So anyway, I'd like to call this meeting to order. First, I do any agendas. Public input period. If anyone wishes to address counsel at this time of public input period, you have two minutes. Please come forward. That's not the delegations. Okay, moving on. Motion to adopt the agenda. Move by. Spear and second to by. Fisher, discussion on the agenda. All in favor. Post, which carry. Motion to adopt the minutes, uh, February 11th, 2014. Move by. More, second to by. Fisher, discussion on the minutes.
There's something in one of the minutes I wanted. Oh, yeah.
More.
Okay, on the, on page 12. Um, my motion on page, is it page 12? Oh, yeah, it says, uh, I'd like it to say, lower the current five, fifty-five thousand, two-hundred-dollar estimate as opposed to amend. Looks like we're going up, but I was hoping that would go down.
Are we on the committee of the whole or the regular?
Regular.
No, she's...
Oh, I'm sorry, that's in committee of the whole. Sorry, I haven't gotten there yet.
Okay, I had one on.
Regular.
Nothing for the meeting.
Go ahead, Hilton.
Um, yeah, regular meeting, council Tuesday, February 11th, yeah. So on page two, just again, the, um, under adoption of council minutes. And it's at the very top, motion by Bloomie, seconded by Thatcher.
What page in one?
Am I on the right page?
Mm-hmm.
Anyway, it says, "From the reference to the Seven Summit School of Learning." It's actually technically the Seven Summit Learning Center. So if we could just correct that, I think it's important that we get the name right. Cause not a school, technically a traditional...
Okay, without amendment to the minutes, regular meeting minutes, all in favor. Post, carry. Uh, the minutes will be, the whole meeting of council on the 12th be adopted and the recommendations within be approved. Move by, more, second to by. Spear and discussion on those minutes.
Okay, the only thing is, on page 12, the motion, um, committee of the whole recommend a council prepare Washington Street shelf-ready documents to be grant-ready, uh, instead of pendered, I'd like that to say, uh, lower the current fifty-five thousand, two-hundred thousand dollar estimate.
Is that what the motion said?
Yeah, that was the point of it, was to lower that amount.
Post, carry.
Um, I mean, I don't have a very good memory of this, but I don't know, I'm not very comfortable amending a motion if it's a meaningful amendment after we've already voted for it. I mean, I'm assuming that this is what was actually said at the time, whether it was the intention of the trade.
Yeah, well, I, I...
Yeah, men could be lower.
Well, it can be lower. Well, I don't have it with me tonight, but it was just, my, my point was, I wanted to see this number come down. I didn't want to see it go up, so I wanted to specify that. The point was to try and get that number lower.
Point, I guess, the counsel, the point the counsel Bloomie's making though is, if it was the motion, then that was the motion, so...
Well, I remember what I said and that the intent was to lower it, not to... But it's okay, we can amend, it can be lowered, if you're gonna be picky about it, that's fine. I'm being picky about it, so...
Okay, with that, non-amendment, I guess, all in favor. Post, carry. Uh, registered petitions and delegations, uh, Mr. Worley, please come forward and you have a few minutes of our time and excite us with some great news.
Sure.
Thanks.
We have a PowerPoint slideshow, if people are okay with that and, uh, the lights down a bit.
Yeah, we'll get that.
So, um, I'm thankful to be here and, uh, thank you for allowing me the opportunity to talk and explain what, uh, what I'm doing and, um, recent reclamation of gold exploration activities in the Roslyn area. Uh, for people who don't know me, my name is Dan Worley, I'm a PTO, a special geologist, um, have been for twenty years. I've lived in Roslyn for twenty-six years. I've been a homeowner for twenty-two years and, uh, really enjoy working and living here. But, um, I'm doing some, some recent work. Before, I did a lot of working for companies and, and then consulting work, and now I'm doing my own work on my own claims. And it's a good opportunity, I think, for me to, um, give, um, council and public some knowledge on what I'm doing and, instead of just gossiping hearsay and seeing me out there once in a while, um, I'd like to come forth and, uh, and say what's going on. So, if we just move on here. So, where I'm working, it's the Old Mining School area. And I'm assuming most of you know where that, that is, but for those that, that may not know where it is, this is a photo from the South Belt. And we see Roslyn there, Happy Valley there, I think that's the cemetery. Um, Old Mining School is at the eastern foot of Columbia Cutney Mountain. There's Bonny Cristo, there's Red, there's town there. So I'm working just in this area there. And if we look at a plan view, there's Roslyn, uh, proper there. This is the city boundary in red along there. And the Old Mining School encompasses several hundred acres of, um, of an area where, where they did this, this, uh, this work in the late seventies, early nineteen eighties. I'm working in this area, the exploration is number two. Uh, the reclamation, and reclamation is, um, the definition would be restoration of disturbed land through, um, through activities, human activities. Um, they don't necessarily have to be mining or exploration, but the reclamation will be trying to bring it back to its original state, or as best you possibly can. So that's area one, reclamation, and area two is the exploration. You access it by Columbia Cutney Road and the city gate at its northeast boundary here. So that would be upper Happy Valley Road to some people. Um, you then go through the gate, you follow the road down, go past the ore piles, and follow left, and immediately you'll see where I'm working on, the mascot, what's called the mascot number two ton. So, it, it, it has to really start, um, with, uh, a bit of history of the mining school area. And it, it has a rich history, it's multi-layered, uh, there's periods when there was activity. Uh, the activity starts in, really, in the Columbia Cutney Mine, which was a very big producer at the beginning. And as you can see from this little photo, the first load of ore delivered at Trail was from the Columbia Cutney Mine drawn by Doug Gillis. So the first ore that ever went through the Trail smelter was from the Columbia Cutney Mine, not from the Leroy or the Center Star or the War Eagle. They were, they were struggling, the Leroy was, was really struggling at that time. Columbia Cutney, uh, was very accessible and, um, it was doing quite well. Um, so this, I love this photo, I think...
Miners Hall behind?
Pardon me?
Is that the Miners Hall behind, or is it...
I'm not sure, I'm thinking it's either the Miners Hall, possibly the Leroy Brewery, or even the Line Brewery. Um, but I think this fellow here might be Doug Gillis. He looks like a pretty happy guy. And I love these old photos. Um, I like the bucket, I do. Um, so, the, the first wave of activity in the Old Mining School area, I could call it that, was the, the, the big Columbia Cutney Mine, very significant. Um, it drew the attention of Whitaker Wright, who was the world's biggest mine financier, London mine financier. That's a whole different story, I could go talk for a few hours about that, I won't. Um, suffice it to say that the, the area drew a lot of activity. Uh, I'm working on the claim next to, to the Columbia Cutney Mine called the mascot. And the mascot was an old claim and it, uh, had a very rich history. It, there, back in the early eighteen nineties, ninety-two to ninety-six, um, there was, it was, claims were being flipped like real estate was three or four years ago. Um, people were buying claims sight unseen, uh, basically they'd, they'd meet a staker in the bar and he'd say he has something booming. So they sold, um, what was called the Eldorado Claim for five thousand dollars, sight unseen in the bar. The claims were being staked so furiously though, like sometimes a hundred a day, fifty a day sort of thing, the fellow paid for it. They didn't survey the claims till almost a year later. It was found out this is, this Eldorado Claim, now this is the claim I'm working on, the mascot. So the Eldorado held the ground that the mascot had, it was sold. And when the survey came around, it found out that the mascot was staked hours before the Eldorado. So when the guy sold it for five grand in the bar in Roslyn, he actually didn't have a claim himself. So this went all the way to B.C. Supreme Court and then all the way to Supreme Court of Canada in eighteen ninety-six and ninety-seven. And they, they said there's, there was no ill intent, the guy got his five thousand dollars back, we're gonna leave it at that, and, but it, but the mascot claim holds. That's the claim I'm working on. Little, little rich history there. Uh, the only other Supreme Court battle that I know of in, in a Roslyn claim is actually, um, was not a claim I had, I won that battle ten years ago. So that went to B.C. Supreme Court. Um, Roslyn has an extremely rich story and many, many stories behind these claims. But, um, the next period of activity after the boom of the nineties was the depression era, so thirty-two, uh, well, technically it's, it's twenty-nine to, to Second World War, but the area, the, the time between thirty-three and thirty-seven, uh, the gold price doubled from twenty dollars an ounce to about thirty-seven dollars an ounce. And that, that created another boom in Roslyn. The guys that were working at the Trail smelter at the time, they were laid off because activity was lower. These were old miners from Roslyn that worked at the smelter. They asked if they could work in the old mine. And consolidated at that time, let them. And they just worked the, the top seven dry levels, so they did no pumping. They, they only worked the top seven levels of the old Leroy, the War Eagle, the Columbia Cutney, um, et cetera. And that, um, they took out two-hundred-fifty-quart million ounces of gold, which even today, that's a fabulously rich pile. Um, but what it did in the, in the thirties, Roslyn didn't, relatively speaking, Roslyn didn't suffer as badly as a lot of other, uh, communities around the world. Um, they had this, this depression era mining going on. And I've talked to people like, like Mike Delitch and Jack McDonald, who've worked as kind of wheelbarrow boys or truck drivers in this depression era mining, and they, they told me this, that, that there was a shower of gold that, that spread out from Roslyn that helped the community out of that. The next period of, of activity in the Old Mining School area is the Old Mining School. And that was, uh, the Roslyn School of Mines, uh, late seventies, early eighties. And they did a lot of work, so they're, they were working over, over this three-hundred acre area, uh, practicing blasting, practicing moving equipment, uh, driving equipment, working underground, working above ground. Um, there's, there's all kinds of evidence for, for widespread activity that they did out there. Um, that closed down. The next period of activity was in the mid nineteen nineties, from nineteen ninety-two to nineteen ninety-six, something I was lucky enough to, to partake in. And we were mining, um, on, um, the eve, on the evening star on mine crystal, as well as accessing the Columbia Cutney Mine to get underneath the iron coal claim. Uh, there was fabulously rich ore there, we took out an ore body that had twenty-five ounce per ton gold, and this is off-the-scale gold. The average, average world mining grade at this point, underground, is, uh, three grams per ton. Now that would be about less than point one ounces per ton. We were mining twenty-five ounces per ton, it's off-the-scale, rich stuff, beautiful stuff. But again, it was, we worked in the mining school area, um, from ninety-two to ninety-six. Uh, the, the next period of activity is what I've been doing in the last three years. I've been, I've been fortunate enough to acquire those claims over a twenty-year period, adding here and there, and, uh, and, and fortunate enough to, to acquire the mascot claim and some of the claims around there. And the Roslyn claim situation is extremely complicated, uh, to the point where it, even a professional, it would take them years to study, just to figure out exactly where you are on the ground, whose claim you're on, and what status it has. Um, the current claim I'm working on, mascot claim, it's a real muscle, but to give you an idea, the mascot claim is a, an amalgamated, converted, reverted crown, granted, that's reverted again, sell mineral claim. So, you have to be dead sure about, about where you are and what you're talking about. Uh, I've just, over twenty-six years, I've just absorbed it all and I'm fortunate enough to know it. Um, so I've been working, uh, since two thousand and ten in that area, just brief, uh, research and, and, um, physical walking out there, looking at things, doing a bit of sampling. Um, in two thousand and twelve, uh, I started work, and that's what I'm gonna go on to. So it's got a, the area's got a very rich history. I've taken, uh, Jackie Drysdale and her heritage committee out there. In two thousand and eleven, after the two thousand and tenth season, I, I found and discovered many, uh, beautiful old, uh, cultural things from the various eras of, of mining and exploration activity. I took her whole group out there one day, a beautiful sunny day, and we saw stuff like the Columbia Cutney, um, compressor foundations, which are quite substantial. Uh, they're the biggest thing outside of Leroy Foundations for their compressors. Um, there's, uh, an, an old iron dam on, uh, Milk, uh, on the Intermountain Creek called Milk Creek, and they used, they dammed that in the eighteen nineties to, to get their water over to this compressor station. Um, there was a manager's house, I'm thinking, I don't know, but I'm guessing, near there, and there he's got foundations for that. So that's, that's sort of the, the, the north-east bit of Columbia, the foot of Columbia Cutney Mountain. Down in, in, if anybody knows that, there's a grassy sort of meadow, and there's some really old apple trees. And if you look closely, there's foundations for a house, and I'm thinking this might have been the manager of the Columbia Cutney Mine stayed there. I, I don't know the history, it'd be interesting to find out. So Jackie's up to speed on that, she's seen everything I've seen, um, I'll just let her go with it. Um, that's part of the job too, is, is to document some of the cultural, um, historical resources there. Um, it's, it's really good, I feel, um, for the layperson in town and those that are interested, to understand what's going on below ground, geologically. I think we all have a really good idea of the, the rich above-ground history that Roslyn had, big boom, the continuing saga of stuff that goes on here, but, and why we're here. But, but really, it, it goes back millions of years ago to the late Jurassic. This is a simple, about seventy million years ago, this is a simplified geological map. You'll see Roslyn proper, developed Roslyn, where we all, most of us live, here. And the orange is what's called an intrusive, and it's like a granite. Technically, it's the Roslyn Monzonite, but you can think of it like a granite. It's coarse grain, it's salt and pepper looking. This is the material that the foundations of the courthouse and the post office are made of. Sort of a grayish coarse grain, salt and pepper rock. And all of town, all of developed Roslyn sits right in the middle of it. It is barren as anything. You don't want whole claims in here, there's no gold in here, ninety-nine percent of all gold was taken out of Leroy area. There's a few wisps in there, but they're really insignificant there, they'll, they'll never be mined again. Um, Roslyn essentially sits on barren material, no worries about mining there. Um, so the, the green material is Roslyn volcanic, it's older, um, it's, it, it was hard solidified ro... And picture the, the orange, the intrusive, uh, coming up and breaking, now this takes millions of years, we're speeding it up a bit, but the, the orange, the orange is an intrusion, it's intruding into the pre-existing green, the, the volcanics. So as it comes up, it's, it's breaking and shattering the margins where, which just makes sense, it's coming up and it's shattering things. It starts cooling and collapsing, and this, these sheer zones along the margins or the, or the edges are, are, are open shear zones, fracture networks. So that would be along the south margin and along the north margin here. And in, in geological theory, what happens when mineralizing events occur is, is these intrusions, the last thing that happens is you get what's called late-stage fluids. All the goodies are in there, all the gold, all the silver, all the copper is in the quartz calcite-rich late-stage fluids, and they're traveling up those cracked margins on either side. So the late-stage gold-rich fluids are, are, are forming in, in healed, what we call healed shear veins. The gold comes up those fractures, then the quartz comes and it's healed, and you have these, the Leroy veins, and they, they strike through there, self-belt veins through there. So, so that's what happened. And, um, the, the other interesting feature is that the, the very rich Leroy, three million ounces were taken out, that's four, four billion plus dollars today's dollars, was taken out in what's called an embayment, or a, a round enclosing feature. And this, this helped funnel all the gold-rich fluids into this, this embayment here. And if you look over here, you get the same type of embayment feature in the volcanics. And, and what that does is, it, it provides funnel. So the fluids are coming up, and they're not only going in these shears, but they're going, they're kind of being funneled into these embainments. And so there, it's, it's the perfect trap for mineralization, and that's why it's so rich there. And now, you, you might start thinking, you know, I think I see what he's getting up to. Cause this, this is actually a mirror image situation of Leroy. The Leroy veins go through here, they're very thin in the Monzonite, they burst out again and get thicker in, in the volcanics. And these embainments have helped trap it, and this is what I, I think is going on over here. So, if, the, the best way to think of the veins, now if we look at the gold veins, where are they? What, you know, best thing to do is look at the pre-eighteen ninety-two claims. And you might see them in some of your land maps, uh, that you're dealing with here. Um, for instance, uh, this is the iron coal. And, and the iron coal subdivision still retains the shape of the old eighteen ninety-two claim. What these claims show is, is the prospectors to stake them, they were, they wanted to get the most vein they could, so they staked along the vein. Then you can tell obviously, the veins aren't going like this, they're going like this, okay? And, and there's the Leroy, Center Star, War Eagle, Josie. Um, the veins are going like that, like this, like this. And if you just look at the next slide there, there's where the veins actually are, geologically. There's the claim, there's the vein. So the veins, there, there's a, a, a very prolific vein here called the North Belt vein. This is the Main Belt vein, these are the Leroy veins, so you had a Leroy South, a Leroy Main, and a Leroy North vein. And then you had a trend here, uh, cross-cutting it, that's the War Eagle trend, sort of west, northwest, Leroy is east, northeast. And you also have out here, in the embayment where, where I'm working, is a, is an intersection of the mascot veins with the Leroy vein. Again, another mirror situation. Here we have the self-belt veins on the south margin of the intrusion. And that was a phrase, self-belt, was a phrase that was coined in the eighteen nineties to describe those veins. That's where we get the colloquial term in town, self-belt. So if you live in self-belt, it's from naming of the veins.
Okay, there you go, my house.
Last geology slider. Um, just, this is important, this is, this is, this is a geological survey of Canada map, nineteen thirteen. They're, they're halfway done mining, they're gonna be going to Columbia River level in depth down here and here on the War Eagle. This is Leroy, War Eagle, so this is at the southeast foot of Red Mountain, just behind Museum. The yellow is the intrusion, the Monzonite, and the red is the actual mined vein. The point here is that these are relatively speaking, thin, discreet vein packages. They're anywhere from three feet to averaging, say, eight or ten feet occasionally, uh, much wider as in Leroy. Um, but, but the point is, and I've seen it from drill core, thousands of feet of drill core, and I've seen, I've actually seen it underground myself when we're mining, and it's described in the literature, the vein package is discreet. So what I'm saying there is, underground, if you're, if you're looking at a section, you're at, at the face of the, of the vein, there's the vein there, nice clean contact, you can see it. And then you'll get your, your, your healed quartz and, and the gold and the silver and the copper in there, the mineralization. And you'll see the other end of the vein, the other edge of the vein here, and the vein's going like this, through the rock. Right here, all this stuff, assays real good, it's usually about half ounce per ton, that's what you mine up. Right next to it, that part there runs absolutely nothing. This runs nothing. All this out here runs absolutely zero. You get to the other side of the vein, you can see, there's the vein and there's the vein, it stops. This part here runs absolutely nothing, that runs nothing, that runs, runs absolutely nothing. And believe me, we've tried to make it right, it just doesn't run. So what you do is you only mine that out. And that's, so, and these ore bodies are much longer in the depth extension, they're very, very long, they go all the way to the Columbia River level, and they probably go much deeper than that. They're longer than, in the depth than they are laterally, so your ore bodies end up looking like, like this. The, the point being, the point I'm making here, this is classic underground mining situation. This elsewhere in the world, this, most gold mines, most copper mines, most metal mines are mined in, in what they call huge super pits. And that, the reason why they do that is because the gold is sprinkled here, a little bit there, a little bit here, a little bit there, a little bit there, there's no real vein, it's just all over the place. It's, it's disseminated, disseminated ore bodies. So you can take out this huge scoop out. Roslyn is not like that. Very discreet, you, the, once you're out of the vein, there's nothing, nothing at all. So I just wanna make the point, this is how you mine those. There is nowhere I know of in Roslyn where you would have open pit gold on it. Okay? The moltenum pits, yes, those existed, but that was strictly from moltenum, there was no gold in those, they didn't mine those for gold. I've talked to the mine manager, Ray Keen, uh, was good enough to introduce me to him several years back, and he told me they assayed all that, it's strictly moltenum, it's in the literature. Now, now in those moly, moly pits area, it's small details. You, around the world, you mine moltenum as a byproduct of copper mines. There's, there's very, very few primary moltenum mines, and if there are, they're huge. And if there are, they're huge. Rosslyn, what's there on the scale of things is, they only took out a million tons. And it's almost, on the scale of copper mines and moltenum mines around the world, you don't talk about stuff like that. You go through these great big mines in Mexico or in Chile, where you're talking billions of tons. The scale here isn't economic. So I would, I would just like to clarify that, that Rosslyn, gold mining is a strictly underground situation, and the pits on red will remain as they are now. I don't think they'll ever go back to that. So if we get on to what actual work I'm doing, this is the reclamation. So this is, this is at the north end of Columbia Cootenay Road. There was, as I said, there's a history of all these layers from the 1890s to the '30s, mining school, 1990s mining. There's debris piles, there's metal, there's old cars, there's, you know, mine cars, rails, nails, stuff from all those eras in some spots over a wide area. And what I'm doing is part of what the ministry encourages now, that when you work, when you're permitted to do exploration work, like I'm doing, you're also supposed to be actively at the same time cleaning up after yourself. So it's just like, you know, after you have a meal at home, you do your dishes right away, or you can let them pile up, you know, and you end up with this big mess. Well, now you're encouraged to do it at the very same time. There's not supposed to be anything to clean up at the end because you've done it all along. So I've taken upon myself to clean up some of these areas. This is from a 2000, year 2000 burn pile where the, that the government of D.C. did in some of their cleanup efforts. They pushed all this stuff together that was a lot of wood and timbers, and, you know, it had nails and metal and stuff in it, and they burned it. And this was left, and this was never cleaned up. So I've taken it upon myself to clean all this stuff up. And as you can see, there's literally thousands of nails in the pile. And, you know, people walk out there, people have their dogs out there, my friends go out there, I go out there. It's absolutely beautiful place, but I don't want to step on that stuff. And so it's really good, I think, to clean it up. This is, this is from this one pile, and thousands of nails, spikes, you know, wire, big schools of wire and metal and stuff. This stuff needs to be cleaned up. Into the back of the car it goes, and then into the trail dump, and into the metal recycling bin, and it's recycled. So pretty happy about that. And it's a big part of what I do out there because working in the old mining school area like the, because of the history that it's had, there's this, there is piles of this stuff, and it's, I've taken it on to work with ministry and clean some of this stuff at the time that I'm also doing exploration work. Now, if you have a look at that same pile, so we cleaned it up last summer, and this is the end of the summer, and probably, this is the pile here, probably this summer, you won't even know where it was. It'll, the grass will move in, plants will start growing there, and it'll look just like that. This is Columbia Cootenay Road here, coming down. And the ore piles and stuff are up here. This is towards the south. If we look at the work I'm actually doing in gold exploration, this is Columbia Cootenay Road here, the ore piles would be over there. When, about, must have been 15 years ago, I was actually partners, good friends and neighbors with Mike Dulwich. And Mike, Mike was a vast resource of all this mining knowledge. And we were neighbors and friends. And before Mike passed away, he gave me this big stack of original documents from the 1890s to '30s, this fabulous stuff. It'll end up in the museum one day. But a few years ago, I was looking through it again, and I found this late 1930s, original engineer's stamp map of the Mascot claim, which I happened to own. And I looked at this map, and it has 6,500 feet of underground workings on five levels. This is the number two portal that's sloughed in since the '30s, naturally sloughed in. And in 2012, I was permitted to dig this out. And all the work was done by hand, every bit of it. We never used an excavator, we never used big machinery. And it's, this is Frank Fowler, he's, he helps me with this. He's a retired geologist, I'm pretty well-retired myself, and he lives in Happy Valley. We both absolutely love going out there. It's beautiful, it's a gorgeous place to work. We like doing stuff with our hands, and I just love it. The thing is that Frank, it's kind of nice because Frank actually hired me in 1988 to come out here from Saskatchewan and work as a gold geologist. And now I have the opportunity, I've hired him back, you know, 26 years later. So it's, it's great. Yeah, so there's, I was very relieved. I thought I found the spot. We started digging, put up this, preserved wood structure and to make things safe. And yes, we did find the number two tunnel. We broke through exactly according to Mike's old, I searched him out, and I'm very happy about that. So this, then we put, we got two, this is the outer gates, and they open in and fold against the side. And you have to have these things locked and keep, keep things safe and disqualify people in there, or owners, and keep the public basically safe by keeping them out. And then this is, this is September of last year, and we have, we put in an inner draft, tight-fitting inner draft door. And so it's locked, and so there's two, there's the outer gates, and there's the inner draft door. They both have high-security boron alloy locks on them. And there's Columbia Cootenay Road. And if you look at day one, when we started, so that's August 2012. And now this is September 2013. We don't work in the winter. It's just seasonal work right now. I've really tried to make this a beautiful place, and I love working there, I love going out there. It's so refreshing to just get away from it all and work out there. And I aim to keep it beautiful like that. It's a bit landscape, but, you know, had to move some rock around, might as well make a few nice-looking walls and stuff. So finally, what am I up to? Where am I going with this? After all the geology and stuff I've talked about, you're looking at this embayment in the Monzanite there, there. You're looking at the intersection of War Eagle and Leroy, and intersections of ore bodies. So you have the big Leroy vein here, you have the big War Eagle vein here, and that's where the big Leroy ore body was there, at the intersection of those two. That in geological terms, that's where you look. That's where the richest, biggest, highest, that's where the three million ounces came out. And it was because of the intersection of the War Eagle and Leroy, right there. That's where the three million ounces came out. Well, it was also in this embayment. Well, you can probably see where I'm going here. There's a big intersection here between the Mascot veins and the Leroy in an embayment. I'm working here on the number two portal, and it goes, the claim tunnels go to about there, almost to the black circle. And back in the old days, everyone had one claim, and the reports that Mike gave me say the Mascot people, they wished they had the next claims so they could check some of these things out. But everyone had one claim, and they thought they had a million dollars on every claim. It's just not the case. So the tunnels stop at the next claim. They stop here. The tunnel goes right to the claim boundary and stops because somebody else owned the next claim. Well, fortunately, I own the next claims. I have a lot of the claims in town. And this is, I'm starting here, early Humble Start, and I want to find out whether Rosslyn has another few million ounces left in her. And through this intersection and embayment theory, it's quite a plausible one. There's very, very good potential right there. That's, the tunnels go like this along these veins, and they blocked out ore in the 1890s there. But the ore was quarter ounce per ton, seven grams per ton, and it was low-grade. You had to, at the time, you had to, there wasn't, the smelter wasn't there, you had to haul it down by wagon team, then on a steamer, then to Northport, Colville, to Railhead, and then to Helena, Montana. You needed one ounce per ton ore. You needed really high-grade ore. So these guys kept thinking, oh, well, we'll find the one ounce. They never did. So that quarter ounce now that they blocked out is ultra-high grade today. And so there's opportunity just in the little bits that are there. But this is, this is what I'm looking towards the future, is something of a big scale, like, like the Leroy, potentially. And, you know, I'd be happy even, even just finding out if that was true, you know. But let's face it, Rosslyn was a three-million-ounce producer. It's, up until a few years ago, prior to S.K. Creek being built, it was the second-largest gold producer ever west of the Ontario-Manitoba border in Canada. Rosslyn is really on the map as far as gold is concerned. And it's always going to have, attract exploration and mining, long after I'm gone. There's going to be people like me, maybe giving a same presentation 100 years later. There's always going to be people looking at this because of that rich history it's got. And, you know, hopefully, I've started something, looking at this situation here. And ore bodies like that worth $4 billion today. There's, you know, boy, it just, it just begins to boggle the mind, you know, when you look at those numbers. So I'm very interested in that situation, but I'm currently just working there. There's also a lot of reclamation to do here in the old mining school area, that history of stuff going on there, so there's lots of that work to do as well. The other thing you might notice is this is the South Belt veins, and there is the Mayflower vein, very significant. There's the New North vein, there's the Go For Home stake vein. Very significant intersection there, going through there. This, this area I know to be very, very rich, and it's, there's literally, I know of, hundreds of millions of dollars of ore right underneath. It's all underneath Mike's shop, basically. He knows it too.
That's like all the ore cars there, waiting for the ore.
Mike, Mike has known that for years. How did geologists come to him all three years in Helena, St. Louis? We've done some drilling, we're talking about 10% zinc and a half ounce, half ounce gold in the zinc. You know, really, and it's because of this intersection. So that spurs me on over here, because this is very much unknown, much less known than the South Belt. This is all just me putting it together, hoping that it, that it comes true. But I think you'll see why I'm so interested in this area. And, well, I'd like to just show a few references, Geological Survey of Canada, Ministry of Energy, Mining and Petroleum Resources, Ministry of Energy Mines, Middle Channel Online. This is all well, well-documented, well-known stuff. If you want to check it out, go ahead, jot it down, or ask me later if you're interested. But I'd really like to thank you for letting me give you an idea, and I hope you come away with this with a few, just a bit more basic knowledge about what's going on here below the ground and the potentials and the type of things you would go after and how you'd do it.
Thanks a lot, Dan.
Thank you.
That was great.
Very interesting.
Very interesting, for sure. Does anyone have any questions with Dan?
Yeah.
Of course, we could probably go all late on that one.
Yeah. Do that presentation at the museum sometime.
I've done a few.
Okay.
Not this one, but I have done some, the legal battle thing.
Mm-hmm.
A lot of battle.
Very interesting, yeah. Thank you.
Thank you. Next delegation is Mr. Gustafson, Jim.
You need worship?
You need the...
Nope. How much time?
Would you like to answer or...
To spend on this.
Well, I'm thinking if you've got 15 minutes, that'd be great.
Okay. Thank you, Worship again. And first of all, before I get started, I'd like to thank Councilor Wallace for her involvement with the hospital board and especially with the executive boards. She's done a great job over the years, and I enjoyed working with her very much.
Thank you very much.
Now, so this project, this started about six months ago. I received, oh, I shouldn't introduce myself for someone that don't know me. I've been in the West Cootenays for 20-plus years in local government as an administrator, 15 or so with Castle Guard, and the last five or six with the regional district of Central Cootenay. And about in the last three years of that, the regional district of Cootenay Boundary turned over the administration of the hospital board to the regional district of Central Cootenay, and that's how we got involved with that. So basically what happened is Castle Guard asked me to come in and speak to their council about the hospital board and how it works. And so I did that and explained to them, basically, to the hospital board, it's a bit of a difficult thing to really understand because a lot of municipal councils don't pay a great deal of attention to the hospital board because it's, the taxation impact is relatively minor, and the board itself is huge. Thirty members from across essentially two regional districts, from Big White over to Great Creek on the east shore of Cootenay Lake, and as far up north as Nacaseville down to the American Board. So it's a large area, and it's a large board with 30 people. And the interests are varied and complex. So basically, what happened, in 2011, Interior Health approached the hospital board and indicated to the hospital board that they should begin some planning for the future. About that time, shortly thereafter, there was an indication that the province was going to undertake a major study, which received a lot of media attention three or four months ago. That was released after one or two years of study. In addition, the board also...
In addition, the board also passed a resolution in 2011 to participate in planning with Interior Health, because nothing is going to progress in terms of acute care unless it's in partnership with all the partners involved in the hospital board, and especially a partnership with Interior Health. So, to give you some idea of the magnitude of the issue, acute care in this hospital district has four facilities: Trail, Nelson, Nacase, and Grand Forks. Those four facilities are about three-hundred-and-eighty thousand square feet. In addition, there's the community health centers, which are the smaller centers in Caslow, Castle Guard, and Denver, as well as some other smaller facilities and some of the other communities, and that total's about two-hundred-and-ten-thousand square feet. And in addition, there's also the residential, and the residential's about two-hundred-and-eighty thousand square feet. So, it's a huge portfolio. Now, the residential is not statutory obligation of the hospital board to become involved in residential capital improvements. They are required to participate in acute care projects in those four hospitals as well as the community health centers. But the residential, there's been involvement in the past, and then there's, some years it's out and some years it's in. And unfortunately, this particular hospital district isn't a rich one. There are other hospital districts around to the west of us that are much wealthier and much more willing to participate in capital projects that involve residential care as well as acute care, as well as the community health centers. So, that's sort of the magnitude of the issue, that the hospital board has this responsibility of either about nine-hundred-thousand square feet, if everything were included, or about six-hundred-thousand if you take the residential out. The other thing that's happened is IH has included on their radar and on their proposed budgets about one-point-five million dollars to do planning studies in the West Cootie Boundary, because there are a number of issues, there are a number of things that need to be addressed, and so that's why the one-point-five million has been allocated. I shouldn't say it's been identified, it hasn't been allocated as of yet. The second point is that Interior Health has a process for capital projects. These things do not happen overnight. It's about a sixty-month process, or about a five-year process from basically start to the point where you can begin construction. So, if there are major projects, there is a process and it's a lengthy one. So, this project is in the Schedule D, the Interior Health, the one-point-five. There are two other projects identified in that budget, and these are the projects that are over a million dollars. The projects that are under a million dollars don't really come in line with this capital budget. The larger projects require the approval of the province, and in some cases, the approval of Treasury Board as well. So, basically, Castle Guard said there's one-point-five million, and they asked me such what is needed to encourage Interior Health to proceed. There are some issues that Interior Health has stated in the past, that it is, it is a lot of money, one-point-five million for planning purposes, and there's, there needs to be a show of intent by the region and not just the hospital board. That's why I'm here and not for the hospital board, is talking to the governments, is there has to be some sort of willingness to have this conversation. There are in some parts that, most communities are very, very reluctant to have the conversation, because inevitably, it has, and I've been around for a long time, it has blown up, and for one reason or another, and there's no rights, there's no wrongs, that's just the way it is. And so, Interior Health has suggested that the region should begin financial planning, should begin to come to some terms that would welcome Interior Health into the region, participate in the study, and that there are no bad, bad guys in this scenario. The province isn't the bad guy, Interior Health isn't the bad guy, Interior Health staff are not the bad guy, the hospital board's not the bad guy, and neither are individual communities. So, everybody's out there to represent their own interests. So, the purpose of this thing that I circulated, I've gone around to all thirty jurisdictions of hospital board and spoken to the local governments, is to have a discussion, and I've asked, tried to make it as short as possible, and the intent was to have each jurisdiction...
Excuse me.
Basically, are you in favor of participating in the study? What are the top acute care issues in your community and what recommendations you have to the hospital board? And the plan was to appendix that to a relatively brief strategic plan, and for the first time, then, that all the communities, all thirty communities, then on hopefully one page or less, could identify what their priorities are, and so that perhaps municipal councils, the hospital board itself, and Interior Health could see the range of issues that are across the board. And then, what I was attempting to do was take those thirty pages and to summarize, consolidate, and come up with perhaps half a dozen recommendations for the hospital board. This is a document designed for the hospital board, and then presented to the hospital board in June, I think, is the last hospital board before the summer break. And hopefully, that would be a catalyst for the hospital board to begin this conversation and to begin having reasonable discussions amongst the communities, amongst the hospital board, inclusive with Interior Health, to try to make this thing move forward. So, your worship, that's essentially it in a nutshell, and ten minutes or so.
That was well done. Any questions for Jim?
I have a question. Hi, thanks for coming. I'm just curious why this, it seems like this is initiative from Castle Guard rather than from the board. Is that, is that correct?
Well, to be frank, it probably wouldn't have gotten this far if it had been the board, because it is so controversial, that just drafting the terms of reference would have been agonizing. So, the plan was, it's strictly voluntary, and the board may say, hey, this is a great report, and there's six recommendations, we like three of them, the other three, we don't understand what the heck he's talking about, and it's a bit... And then perhaps the hospital board will then move an additional three on top of it. At least the important part is to start the conversation. And a strategic plan with stakeholder involvement seemed to be the logical first step.
Yeah, it does. It was just my confusion about why it wasn't from the board, why it's coming from one municipality, and just sort of, I mean, I'm assuming you are a neutral party in all this, despite it coming from Castle Guard.
Well, unfortunately, my civic address where I live is Castle Guard. But when I started this assignment, I was perfectly clear with Castle Guard council. I'm not going to be a cheerleader for the city Castle Guard. I understand the explosiveness of the situation, I understand the politics, I understand the relationship with Interior Health, and if there's a reasonable chance of something moving forward, here's an idea, and that's where we are today.
Well, I appreciate Castle Guard's initiative and you taking it in. That's great, thank you.
Counselor Blumey, Jim.
Yeah, what's the total budget that we're talking about here? You said that the one-point-five million for the study, would you happen to know what's the ballpark, what a total budget is that coming from?
Yeah. We can tell you exactly. I've got a sheet here that, there's about five different studies involved in that project.
Okay.
And it takes place over the course of sixty months. I can send a copy to Tracy, exactly what those, what comprises the one-point-five.
Thank you. And then you say that...
Actually, excuse me. The document that I was gonna send you is considerably higher than that, so it'll be closer to two. But I was using one-point-five as some safeguard in there.
And now you say that it's controversial with the, the hospital board, our hospital board, is it the actual, what part is it exactly that, I mean, I know about the general controversy if we're talking about, you know, healthcare in the area, that I get, but as far as this strategic planning, is our hospital board resistant to the idea of planning, do you mean?
No, I don't think so, because I haven't approached the hospital board. I was specifically asked to stay away from the hospital board. That's why I didn't approach Counselor Wallace at all in this matter. I've spoken to CAOs and mayors and councils when asked, and said, this is a local government initiative, and if you're willing to participate and have a discussion on this thing, here's the three questions. And of course, whether Roseland participates or not, you'll certainly be aware of whatever's finished, what the finished product is and what the recommendations.
Okay, and then so the final report will get presented to our hospital board?
That's correct.
And is it some things that they said that they want to see, or was there expression of interest at some point that they might be receptive to receiving some of this?
Well, I spoke to the chair. She was the first person that I contacted, and she indicated that there's not much to lose. So, certainly, if this is Castle Guard's initiative, one of the partners, one of the thirty partners, and they're willing to take a step and reach out, then there will be nothing in the document that talks about single site, double site, triple site, zero site, that's not part of intent, and neither will be a discussion that it's fifty million, a hundred million, or whatever the, there, there will be no discussion about that as well. It's gonna be more of a discussion is, how do we get forward, start taking some steps forward to work with IH to develop a reasonable planning process for the whole region? Because one of the things I've realized, the region is so big, when you go over a few parts of the boundary, they're, they say, well, we don't really care what you guys do over there. We go to Penticton, we go to Colman. So, the longer you keep fighting and don't borrow any money, the better off it is for their region. And same in the Upper Arrow Lakes, most of those folks vote to burn it, and in some cases, over in the east shore of Cootenie Lake, it's another hospital district over in the east Cootenie and load of Preston. So, because it's so big, there are some really big issues to, to address. I should divide it up.
Counselor Wallace, sorry.
Okay, I'm, I'm trying to understand your questions well enough that maybe we could answer them. So, the first one, I'm gonna simplify, basically to would Roseland support the planning process? The first, your first question is basically about whether there would be support for planning, right?
Right.
That's, it's that simple.
That's the one-point-five, that's it.
Yeah. And as you say, stay away from the whole idea of how many hospitals we're talking about.
Yeah, it's a recipe for disaster.
It seems to be. I agree. And then the top three acute care issues in your community. Now, when we talked about it last time, I was suggesting that from our area, a really important topic is that rural healthcare is not urban healthcare, and that the, the attempts by the ministry to centralize and therefore become more efficient and etc. doesn't necessarily fit the needs of rural communities. Is that the type of, that's the type of thing that you're looking for?
See, IH is trying to move away from the discussion of that. IH would rather focus the discussion on services. What kind of services can be brought to the communities as opposed brought to the large, built, they're expensive, beds are expensive. So, I know that's where they're headed, and so, if there are issues, for instance, in Greenwood, the best story I've heard of from all thirty communities came out of Greenwood, and that was for a simple blood test, everybody was either going to Penticton or to Grand Forks. And the mayor worked diligently and petitioned hard and got, provided, I think, room in City Hall or a doctor's office for the nurse to stop in, two hours a week. And if you want a blood test, you have to be there Wednesday at two o'clock, and she's there until four o'clock or three o'clock, whatever it was. And that was a huge success for Greenwood. Those are the kind of things that perhaps with little cost can be addressed and make life a hell of a lot simpler for folks that are living in rural communities.
Okay, thanks, Jim.
That's fair.
Yeah, thank you for your presentation. So, Counselor Blumey asked a question that I was at the top of my mind with regards to kind of the, I guess, the process and the feeding in. I'm still honestly not a hundred percent sure of how of all this works, that's why we have a director. But, you know, when you talk about the blood testing, it's interesting because, you know, we have a couple of clinics in Roseland. I mean, we're serviced by Trail with the hospital, etc., but there's, you know, we used to have a hospital here, but we don't anymore. So, I think what we need to know as a community is we need to find out the inventory of what we actually have, because I'm sure we're not all experts on that, right? And so, how do we proceed? Do we talk to physicians or, you know, as far as what we have in town, because I know you can get a certain blood test at the clinic one day a week, but you have to go to Trail for other blood tests, etc. So, I think we have to have a knowledge base before we can make any recommendations with regards to, you know, the three acute care issues in our community, right? So, how have other communities done that? Do you know?
There's, a lot of the other communities have invited their medical professionals to come in and have a discussion.
Right, okay.
In terms of, have discussions with paramedics. They've involved their advisory planning commissions in some communities. There's been a select group, the mayor and Midway, I think, had a discussion with half a dozen folks from this community. Slocan had a community-wide meeting and invited everybody in to have a discussion with them.
Well, those are great ideas, yeah, along those lines, because for us to kind of even brainstorm, you know, the answers to these questions, which I, which I did personally myself before your visit and not really understanding a lot of this, but now my perspective is a lot different now that you've, you've clarified for us.
There is a huge elephant in the room, and IH told us that the, generally the facilities in this hospital district are amongst, in the bottom half of the state of facilities across the province. So, the first step is this planning step, and hopefully that planning step will resolve some of the issues, and not just the large hospital issues. There's huge issues in Caslow, Nacase is desperate for some investment in their operating room, Grand Forks Hospital's over fifty years old, there's some, New Denver is in difficult shape, as well as Nelson and Trail have severe issues as well. So, anyway, there needs to be a discussion, and there needs to be a discussion with reasonable... And there needs to be a discussion with reasonable, non-heated discussion and hopefully come up with some priorities and let's move forward.
Thank you.
Let me just get with that one.
Yeah, thank you. And one other thing, when you talk about the hospital board being large and diverse, is that, and I'm getting the sense that it's a difficult assignment for them to come, I guess, to make decisions is what I'm hearing from you. Are other hospital boards like that or...
There are...
Is that common, is what I'm asking?
Well, this one is a bit different because we've got this huge area and we've got a very small population. We're only eighty thousand. And yet we have thirty members of the board. So that's it. I don't think we're the highest. I think Thompson, Nettala might be have the most members of thirty-two. But we're certainly number two or number three in the province in terms of size. And that's going to be one of the issues that I'm going to address, that whoever the consultants are are to take on this project, whether it's two years, five years, ten years down the road, the board is going to have to come up with a way other than dealing with thirty. It's like a small problem. And to move forward with major capital projects, there's going to have to be another committee of three or five, whatever the least may be, something a heck of a lot more manageable than thirty.
Thirty, yeah. Makes sense. Thank you.
Anything further for Jim? Nope. Thanks very much, Jim, for coming. Appreciate your presentation and...
What's the date for those questions to you?
March fifteenth.
March fifteenth? Okay.
Yeah. Hopefully we can get to them. Thank you very much.
I'm going to go look for some gold.
Yeah. Get your pick in your pan.
Just wait till three.
Okay.
Okay, moving right along. Night.
Good night. Thank you.
Request for council decision is that council received the deputy CAO's report dated the seventeenth regarding the city auditor's letter of June twenty-fourth, addressing letter's complaint received during the thirteenth audit. By Fisher, second, and by Wallace, the session.
Yeah, actually, having gone through the letters, just quickly, I mean, obviously, there are a number of the things have been addressed, but some of the things haven't been addressed. And I think the people should know that we are... I think there's, I think that something that hopefully isn't lost on members of, I don't know, members, but citizens of Roslin are that we are moving forward on a number of these things already. And one thing that reminded me of this particular issue was a friend of mine who I worked with left their job and they were gone. And the new person came in and started finding things that they had done incorrectly. And everybody right away jumped on my friend that was gone and said, "Well, look at how incompetent they were. They didn't do this and they didn't do that." The guy had worked there for fifteen years and he'd done a whole lot of good stuff. And there were some things that through the course of his work that he had his own way of doing and still managed to do a good job. So some of these things that are, and I'll use the procurement policy as an example, there is a procurement policy at the city of Roslin, although it wasn't followed exactly to the letter, or in some cases was not followed. The staff here had followed the procurement policy in the past and we're redrafting it now as we speak. So it's really easy to throw darts at things when people are gone. But I think the message that should get out is that we are working on the things that are in the audit letter. And we're doing our best to make sure that we represent the city of, the people of Roslin in the best way possible. Because I think sometimes when you read these things, you can read them just as black and white. And sometimes the gray areas are a little more obscure. And sometimes even in the political process that I've learned in the two and a half years or whatever it is now that I've been doing this, is that, you know, we're getting to the right answers and sometimes it's, you know, painfully slow at getting there, but we are getting to the right answers. And I think that that's also part of the process.
Thank you. Councilor Wallace, any doubt?
No. I think that was well expressed. I don't have any...
Any further?
Yeah, a couple of comments. Appreciate the response to this. It's great. Good to see that there is progress being made. I had a couple of them, and I don't know whether this is the time to talk about it. But when we looked at like the vacation time being paid out and all of that things, that got me thinking about that. And vacation is meant to be rest and renewal for employees, right? It's not meant to be additional compensation when somebody leaves. And I'd like to see us, you know, get a policy in place that limits vacation time to the year unless you get some special thing to carry it over for some, you know, extenuating circumstances. But basically, we should encourage our employees to take vacation during the year that they're accruing it, not bank it and have it be extra pay when they leave. Because one, that doesn't help them rest and renew, right? It's just an extra compensation when they leave, which it's not intended for. So I don't know if it's the time to do it, but I'd like to put forward a motion that we direct staff to create a proper policy.
We'll deal with this motion. We'll deal with this motion.
We have a motion right now.
Oh, I'm sorry. Our motion was to receive. Okay, that's good. We'll make that motion in a second. The other thing that was commented in there was that the auditor recommends that management not make special request to payroll clerk for unusual adjustments. And I think that's another thing that needs to be somehow put into a policy. And we know this isn't, you know, we know people are saying they're not, they won't do that kind of thing. But there should be some mechanism for that payroll clerk to know, I don't know, job description or whatever, that that kind of thing isn't allowed, right? And that they can feel confident that if someone, anyone asks them to do something that seems unusual, that they should have an avenue to come to council or come somewhere to address these things. Because we've had these problems happen in the past. And now we say, "Oh, of course, it'll never happen again." But things have a way of happening again, you know, over time. And I think that would be another thing I'd like to, you know, I'd like to see that. And then the other thing I had a question about was, we talked about the overpayment of pension contribution from two thousand nine to twenty twelve. We were told earlier by the deputy CAO that she thought the pension corporation was notified of the overpayment. And I'm just wondering, was that ever verified and did we get a refund?
A refund for what?
Of the extra that the city paid in on that pension, the overpaid pension on those years from two thousand nine to twenty twelve.
You worship, that was, they were just amended, there's no payment back and forth?
Don't we contribute towards the pension?
I think what you're trying to, excuse me. What you're trying to say is it's the year. So one year was amended to the previous year where it wasn't taken. Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, I'm, yeah, I'm not really quite sure.
Well, don't we make a contribution to the pension plan we actually make, right? And so if we overpaid that amount because we overreported the salary, we overpaid that amount on that.
I'd have to confirm how they handle that.
Okay. I would be curious to know that because I think actually we do some money back on that. And that was it.
Thank you. Anything else on the motion? On the motion to receive, all in favor? Opposed, motion's carried.
I have a receiver and a secondary.
Yeah, we did. And Wallace.
Okay. And then can I just offer my little motion that I was talking about in the midst of that last motion?
Yes, please.
Okay. I make a motion that we direct staff to create a policy that limits the vacation time accrued to the current year. You can add it, unless special approval of something if you want.
First of all, you have a secondary for that.
Well, I'll second it to talk about it. Okay. And I think I've pretty much discussed what I wanted to say about it.
To develop, read that again or can you state that again, please? Because I, I don't really...
A motion to direct staff to create a policy that limits employee vacation time accrued to the current year.
I think, yeah, in that vein, though, you have contracts and etc. that this policy would be, might be contradictory to contracts. Yes, Ms. Butler?
Yeah, we do have contract language in all of our contracts about carrying over vacation time. And it's also in the QP contract appear, you know, just referring to staff. We need to clarify that you're just talking about management staff.
Well, that's what I was considering. And I don't, I don't, I mean, I don't have contracts, so I don't, I mean, I don't have... So do we, we have a policy? I mean, I thought at one point it was a thing we carry...
Aren't QP contracts speak to it?
Not the QP, the management.
Okay. But our management contracts speak to carrying vacation over. We have one contract speaks to it has to be on the mayor's authorization to carry it forward.
Who knew about that one? What about the others?
Well, I...
We'd have to amend our contracts. If that's true.
Yeah. So if you're asking to amend contracts, that's one thing. But the motion is...
The amendment to a contract.
Right. The motion is, the motion is to develop a policy.
Yeah. You can have a policy. The contracts are still in effect, right? Contracts are still in effect. You can have a policy that comes in after the contract. The contract will supersede because they're already signed. But just to try and get a handle on some of this ongoing, these ongoing things, so then in the future, new contracts might not have that particular provision.
I understand how you're getting at it. But I also understand that we're dealing with contracts already. But anyway, I mean, that can be dealt with at the contract stage.
I was just going to say, you worship, that staff would really like to be able to take some of their vacation time. But with our limited resources right now, it's virtually impossible for some of us to take our vacation time.
That would be a good exception, right? That would be a good exception.
Well, that is, that is the exception.
But it isn't, though. That's not always the way it is.
Well, we're not going to debate that. What we're going to discuss, though, is your motion to...
Is there a secondary yet?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, I mean, this is a motion that we have no preparation for. We have had no staff response to. So rather than the motion being requesting a policy be written, I'd rather have a staff response to the suggestion. That I would be comfortable with because I don't have the information to even make this decision.
Well, I think, I think, though, that, you know, because we received that report, in that report it spoke to some things. And so I think this motion was in order or was out of order. So I'll allow that motion, but I, you know, I have, and I appreciate your comments, but I don't have all the information either. But I mean, I think if this is council's will is to develop a policy, then the staff can come back with a report.
Just a quick comment on that. Because if we ask for that policy, part of that would be staff's report with the policy. They'd say, "Well, here's the policy if you want it." But we think it's a terrible idea for this, that, or the other reason, right? They can always have that. They have that option to express what they think about it.
The motion is to develop a policy.
Yes, it is.
Thank you. Okay. I am not certain. Well, I'll leave it to council. Any further questions?
Well, I have a secondary.
Oh, sorry. I missed you.
No, that's okay. Because I'm kind of a... Yeah, I understand the intent and I get the intent. And I agree with, you know, I agree with that, that holidays should be taken within the year if feasible. And I would think that any staff would be looking to take their holidays. But, and I know we have extenuating circumstances right now, which you also addressed. And I know in the past, when I first was on council, there were situations where there was intentional lack of taking holidays for exactly that reason. And it happened to be someone who was quite unwell at the time and should have been taking holidays. So I'm fine with having further conversation about it. And if it means bringing a policy back in order to do that, then, and I also understand the contracts have language around it. So I don't know if one would supersede the other. Obviously, the contracts would. But, yeah, I would be in favor of having further conversation about that.
Councilor Fisher?
I actually don't, I, it could go one way or the other. To me, it doesn't really matter. It looks like a bit of a tempest in a teapot. It's a benefit that the employee gets, that they get paid vacation time in that, that in some cases, they're not going to be here and people will fill in for them on vacation time, like fill in while they're gone on vacation time. But it's still a benefit to the employee. And I guess at the former place that I worked, there was limitations on, you know, you can carry two weeks forward and that was it, things like that. But it wouldn't be a policy around forcing an employee to take vacation completely in that year. Or if they didn't, then would you pay them out for that vacation time at the end of the year if they hadn't taken their vacation? Because it's part of their benefit package to have that six weeks, eight weeks, ten weeks, whatever it is. So I think all those things, I mean, I don't think it just drops off and the city gets the benefit of having somebody work twelve months and not take vacation, then it goes away. You'd never win that. You'll never pass it ever in a million years. So relatively speaking, I don't mind having the discussion around the policy, but it's like Councilor Wallace says, it's a lot more, unfortunately, it's a lot more complicated to make any kind of a stretch on. But I'd vote for it, vote for the motion because we can draft something that's pretty simple. But then it would have to go forward and be part of contracts in the future, not part of the ones that currently exist, so...
And I think too, that I don't know who, if we're planning on signing a whole bunch more contracts or not, but I think we have the contracts in place right now. And if there's, all of a sudden, a new contract comes, a new position or whatever comes up and we're doing a contract, we could negotiate that at that time. I mean, just to develop a policy for the sake of developing a policy when there is, it is a tempest in a teapot. Because there is, what is the need other than, I guess, maybe it, well, I don't know what the intent is because we have contracts in place. Councilor Blumie?
I would vote, I am going to vote against this because I think it's a waste of time. I just, you know, in the end, the end result is going to be very foggy and gray anyway. You know, the end result is unless an exception, well, there's always going to be potential exceptions, right? Because no one's ever going to do it for no good reason. There'll always be some reason. And so how do we decide which reason is okay, which isn't? And, you know, so it's never going to be firmed up and really specific and finalized anyway. And given everything else that we want staff to deal with right now, I just feel like something that's not going to end up having a sure and certain end, we should just let it go and move on and let staff do the other million things we're stopping doing right now.
Okay, thank you.
I want to comment about intent, just to clarify. The intent is to try and plan for a perhaps more fiscally responsible future so we cannot end up with some of these big payouts when somebody leaves as we've had a bit in the past. That's what I'm trying to avoid. That was the intent.
Yeah.
But I agree with what Councilor Blumie is saying, that we have other priorities. So I'm not saying this has to be done tomorrow.
As usual, nothing has to be done tomorrow.
That's right.
Go ahead. Is there a call question?
Okay. Well, that's fiscal responsibility in the far future that may or may not come into effect, whereas, you know, the new contracts and new hires, that's always going to be a separate issue and a separate policy per contract anyway. So that's sort of a maybe, this league, you know, responsible in the future for another council that may or may not follow the policy or take away the policy, you know. Whereas this letting staff do this thing right now, that's a sure and certain fiscal responsibility. I don't have concerns. Spend money on the right thing. Let's count, I mean, let's staff do what they're doing now.
Ms. Butler?
I just wanted to make one statement that you will always see, or you probably will always see vacation being paid out when somebody leaves their employment with the city of Roslin. Because in the majority of our contracts, we accrue vacation for a full year. So we don't use it in that year. In the case of Darren and I, we get our, on our anniversary date, we get our vacation time that we have accrued. So, you know, every year we get that lump sum to use up. So if we leave any time within that year, we're going to get that lump. So it's virtually impossible. I just want to make sure that that's understood. That it's very rarely when a manager leaves their employment that there isn't some form of vacation payout at the end.
And it goes to retirement and things like that, right? You know you're going to retire, so you don't take your vacation till whatever so that when you retire, you've got to your retirement age. Anyway, it's all dealt with in contracts. And so I'm going to call a question. All in motion, all in favor? Opposed? Motion's defeated.
One last little bit, the part that I was talking about, the pension stuff, on page thirty-four, it says the city...
Counselor? Sorry. What is this on the motion that's defeated?
Oh, I'm sorry, just the part we were talking about. There seemed to be some confusion about what I was asking for about the pension, the other portion, about the pension overpayment. I was just going to point out where that was in the package. Just take a second. Thank you. Page thirty-four says, "The city should amend the years in question to obtain a refund of the excess employer contributions made." So that's the part I was referring to. I just didn't have it in front of me when I was talking about it. I just didn't have it in front of me when I was talking about it.
Okay, thank you. Bluey Ray Long, eight A, letter from Roslyn Chamber of Commerce, Mr. Harry, sorry, requesting City of Roslyn takeover coordination of the Fourteenth Canada Day celebrations. Good evening, the room.
Jody, do you have the paper?
Oh, thank you.
Go ahead. You're, you're out of here.
Nice little boy.
Okay. Need a discussion on this?
Yeah, just a couple of comments. You know, I, I was the liaison of the chamber prior to when Counselor Blumie was, and at that time, that, the conversation about the City of Roslyn taking over the Canada Day activities came up more than once. And the chamber was just good enough to keep doing it because it never, ever really got resolved. So I think that the letter speaks to the fact that it's not necessarily a mandate that they want to, as part of, as part of their strategic planning and the goals that they want to accomplish for the businesses in Roslyn, this is not a high priority. So if we want to continue to have the Canada Day event, basically, they're trying to transition this year with some help so that the city can take it over. What that would look like, I don't know. Maybe we need to have an events committee, but we need to have some conversation. Either that or it's going to die. And, yeah, it would be a shame to, to see that, because it's been pretty characteristic on July first of our community to hike up Roberts and have the cake. And it's a thousand dollars' worth of commitment from the city it would become, I guess. So I think we should do it, but we would need to have a, an organized way of doing that.
Would you like to become the person to organize the way to do that?
Um, I'm not necessarily going to say yes to that. I often am not here because, but I would, yeah, I mean, if you want me to strike a little committee or something, but I think staff would have to be involved with it. I mean, I don't know. That's why they're asking us. Do we have the ability to do that? Well, I don't know. What does council think? It's not up to me.
Yeah, you're in it.
Mm-hmm, I did. I think that it would be very unfortunate if the community lost that event. You know, it's a celebration of our, our country. It's, it's an important day, and I do think that it makes sense for it to be under the control of the city instead of the chamber. And I'm wondering if the Recreation Department has the ability to take on the event? That's my question.
I'd love to ask, uh-
Your worship, I'd have to have a meeting with Recreation Department and find out. It's a, it's a very busy time, that time of year, because the pools open.
Right.
And just a lot of extra, extra time.
Well, maybe the Planning Department. Do you want, do we need a motion?
Well, let's just go around to the person and see what we can, yeah.
Uh, I agree, it's not, it doesn't fit with the chamber's mandate, and I think they're trying to go in a new direction. It's going to make them stronger and really focus on their key competencies, and I think that's really good. So I agree that it shouldn't be the chamber. I also agree that the city is going to have a hard time finding the capacity for it. But maybe there'd be, if the city funded it and we had a little committee, I'm also not here usually at that time, myself, but maybe we could get, I don't know, with the Legion or the Ladies' Auxiliary or Rotary, get, try and get a committee of citizens with maybe the focus point being the city, and, and do it that way. Because I agree with Counselor Wallace, it'd be a shame to have it die, but I think the chamber's been talking for a couple of years wanting to hand it off, and I, I think we should help them do that.
You want to jump in, K?
Well, I was going to say that when I first moved to Roslyn, I carried the flag up there, so every new citizen should be required to carry the flag at the top of Roberts, and they don't-
And head the committee.
And head the committee. And head the committee. I'll put that as a no. The flag's pretty heavy, actually. We'll be on to it.
Get Ronnie Monta head the committee.
I'm wondering if there's a possibility to look at getting some support out of a couple areas that we already, and what I'm saying here is, go back to the chamber and to Tourism Roslyn and ask for support to create a new committee, Canada Day committee from within their organization. And then financially support those as a, as a subcommittee. Because I don't, I don't see the chamber, because what ends up happening is, the chamber, if you get the chamber to do it, said, they say yes, but it's never the chamber members that do it. It's the chamber manager that does it. Have you seen them run around? They run around like crazy doing it, right? So what I'm saying is having a completely different committee that, that is driven by a person or persons that acts on behalf of the City of Roslyn, but it, but comes from a subset. Because there's got to be some other energetic people out there that we can tap to put this single event on. It's the one thing that they have to do.
I totally agree. So how do we get to there? Go ahead.
Well, I would disagree with putting it back to the chamber and Tourism Roslyn. Their mandates are really, and I, I can, I'm not going to speak for them, but I'm going to say that knowing both those groups, that it's not their mandate. So I think it, it needs to come from here, and I think it needs to be a committee that's formed. We could invite people. We could invite community members who are interested in striking a committee for the Canada Day event, and you could be the liaison, well, someone could be the liaison, and invite people from the community. I don't think it should be the chamber and Tourism Roslyn.
Well, they'll, and I can rebut. The only reason that I say that they should be involved is that that event, that weekend, is a long weekend. That a lot of people leave. You guys just said you leave.
Well, that's when I finish work.
There's a, that's okay, I'm just saying. But there's a great opportunity to wrap that event around other tourism-like activities in this community. So I don't, I don't see having just the Canada Day community celebration as an end result. I see wrap the event around doing some other things, whether that's mountain biking group wants to run a mountain bike race the same day. Maybe somebody wants to do a triathlon or a mountain run or whatever. Doesn't matter what it is. It's an event that draws people to Roslyn. I think there's an opportunity, because it's a long weekend, to do something like that. So there's got to be some people out there, right?
Okay. I'll volunteer to go back to the chamber as liaison and see if I-
I'll volunteer too. I mean, I'll, I mean, I work a lot in the summer, but I would volunteer to get the thing started.
I think that's, that's where we're going to go, right?
And then I'll, then I need to turn it over to somebody or some committee.
Do you want to speak for it?
Um, just the other organization is the Follies. The, July first tends to be their first day of, of opening for the season, and they tend to participate at the, at the park for the cake opening and stuff. I mean, I, I was going in the direction of the city advertising for a community champion who wants to take this on. But, I mean, that, I, I don't know. Is it an individual that we're looking for, or is it a committee that we're looking for?
Why don't we?
It's a committee.
Why don't we get Counselor Spear, Counselor Fisher, form a little committee, investigate what you want to do and see if you can get some champions? Does that make any sense?
Sure, but I think also that the chamber has some experience from the people that are there that could sit on a, the transition and give us the list of everything that they did.
Well, they've offered that in this letter.
Mm-hmm. And, but I think Tourism Roslyn also, because that weekend can be an actual event weekend to draw people here.
Yeah, that's a good idea. And, and maybe this year, we'll, yeah, we'll get it rolling and, and we won't be here anymore, and the next group can do it. No, I'm just kidding. I'm just kidding. Okay, so I'm putting that down.
So, Counselor Spear and Counselor Fisher will form, are forming a committee to consult with community groups and individuals to help to organize Canada Day celebrations. But, is that, uh-
I'd like to change it to a different mountain, because a lot of people have a hard time hiking up Roberts, to be honest.
You just, you just take your committee and you-
I'm going to change it. We're going to, we're going to hike up the-
I can tell you where you're going.
I don't know. We're going to go up Redhead.
All right. Do you want, do you want to make that motion, uh, counsel?
Yes.
Moved by Spear and seconded by Fisher. Any further discussions?
Thanks.
All in favor? All is carried. Hit Jody, please.
Thank you for your consent.
Now I have to hang around my candidate.
I can.
Regarding-
That's a good training, sir. Carry it.
We're going to get carrot cake instead of white cake.
That's just so wrong. No.
Okay.
Cream cheese icing.
Eight B, a letter from Red Mountain Racers, reproves athlete training facility in Red Mountain. Is there a motion that council in principle support the proposed athlete training facility in Red Mountain and request for the city to provide raw water for snowmaking purposes? Moved by Wallace, seconded by Spear. Discussion? False.
Um, I, I think that this proposal has huge potential benefit for this community. I really do. I'm very supportive of it. Um, oh, sorry. The other side of it is that, that I'm very cautious of a spontaneous reaction from some in the community and having the save our water from a number of years ago rise up again. And so I just want to say that, of course, maintaining quality and capacity of our water is critical. So as long as that is taken care of, then I am fully in support.
Counselor Spear.
Oh, the other question was, did we receive something saying that staff have more information for us about this one?
No, we'll just, we'll just, I'll get to that.
Yeah, no, I, I concur with what Counselor Wallace has said, and, you know, it's not, I mean, you know, water is a precious resource. We all know that. And it's not something to be taken lightly when we talk about our watersheds, but, or our water, our reservoirs via our watersheds. And, you know, this is not jeopardizing as long as the water numbers that we've been presented with are accurate. Ofer was built at a time when it was assumed that we were going to have a, kind of a boom with development in, in and around Roslyn, and obviously, we know that that has, since 2008, has not happened. It's happening, but very slowly. So I think we have, you know, the, the capacity of water, and I know that Red Mountain themselves, you know, they've paid, like, their, the debt servicing on the reservoir, they paid over $870,000. They pay annually $51,000 towards water. So they are, have been paying their fair share for water. So if people think that we're giving it away free, I don't think that is the case. And I worry about, I've already heard in the community about a nominal fee for water, but I think it has to be understood that they have been paying and as we, as, as the citizens of Roslyn have as well, been paying for water. So I think that's important. And I think that the checks and balances are there, and I think the economic benefits to our community are enormous. And we're always looking for ways to boost the economy of Roslyn, and, and I think it's just a win-win for, for Roslyn if, if this is successful.
Carrie? I'm in support of it. I was just going to make a comment about the excess water that we have in Roslyn that, I think the history is that Ofer was built for redundancy and fire flows and all the other stuff came later, from what I gather from reports. Am I-
What do you mean, all the other stuff?
Development.
Oh.
Redundancy and fire flows for the town of Roslyn. That's why Ofer was built. And I know how it got uppers after the fact, but I think that's the general premise of the first discussions when it came from the Planning Department a long time ago. So if you go way back to the original discussions, redundancy, because if the dam ever broke at Star Gulch, you'd have no water in Roslyn. So you had redundant water capacity at Ofer. And also fire flows, because we didn't meet, meet certain fire flows based on the amount of water we'd have. We had six fires going on at the same time in the City of Roslyn. So, but I'm in support of it. Let's go for it.
Hey, uh, well, you want to speak to it?
Well, Jody, I'll, I'll finish up.
Well, you want to, because I'll finish up. Go ahead.
Yes. Um, so I just want to make sure, I'm definitely in support of this in principle. I just want to make sure that what we're agreeing to right now is not specifically this, you know, the actual request, or, since we enrolled them for the nominal fee of $1,000 annually over the first five years. I'm gathering from, just the word principal in the motion, that we're not dealing with those kind of details right now. Is that correct?
That's be my understanding, in principle. I mean, I know there's a request for a nominal amount, but I think that would be dealt with at a different time from my, from my standpoint.
Well, you need to agree.
Did you want to speak to that?
Your worship, what, what staff would be looking for tonight is that council is willing to move forward, knowing that there won't be any payment for, or there'll be a very nominal payment for the use of that water before we go any further. There are a few things that we have to explore. One of them is our water licensing on our three creeks that feed that reservoir. We have had preliminary discussions with the Ministry of Environment in the Nelson office, and it looks like we will have to amend those licenses. They're even getting back to us about what that exactly means and the cost associated with amending those licenses and the timeframe that it takes to amend those licenses. So that is a step that we, as staff, don't want to make the Ministry of Environment do unless council is committed to supplying the water to the academy.
But I, I'm not certain that the cost of supplying that water is necessarily within this, within this in principle. That's where I'm at. I, I understand that there's licenses that have to be looked at. I understand a lot. And I understand that the proponent is saying $1,000 for, for water. I understand that, but I, I don't know that this motion addresses it that way.
Well, we've seen worded.
No, but the, the motion is that council in principle support.
Um, your worship, and we would ask for it to be in principle simply because if we cannot get those water licenses amended, it could possibly be dead in the water because of that, but we are approving that right now.
So we'll just have some more discussion on this right now. Counselor Moore?
Okay. I had, I had a couple of things. One thing that I just read recently, which is kind of interesting, there's an advisory memo that was put out by one of our law firms, Stewart McDonald and Stewart, against advising, advising against getting unqualified agreement in principle letters. And the point was that you, you may be, by doing that, you may leave the municipality open to liability if things, you know, if council changes its mind based on changing circumstances, they recommend, you know, getting some of the details set out first, not in, or at least having some qualifications, right? So I totally support this project. I think it's great. But I think we also need to make sure that we have all our bases covered. And in that, that's one of the things that I, that would actually amend this motion to say, and I'll just say, that we agree in principle providing the project compatible with our water demands and now licensing ability would get thrown in there too. OCP, EDP requirements and mutual agreement on costs, all to be, all to be determined prior to grand final approval. We put that in there, then I'm great with going forward. That gives us, because we still need to, to figure out some of those details. I know staff said that there weren't additional costs to providing raw water, but, you know, that's kind of a, I mean, you have to look at it. We have a reservoir that we maintain. We have pipes, we have intakes, we have things that we maintain. There are costs to those, right? They depreciate over time. They do that. So, and I'm not saying we're going to charge all of that, but I'm just saying, to say the water's free isn't an accurate statement. And before we agree to $1,000 a year for five years, I, I'd like to have a little more information from staff about, about that. I had a number of, a number of other questions. Like, I'd like to see the design. They talk about, in, in the agreement, they talk about all these things, well, we'll have our engineer review those designs. Well, that's going to be an expense for us. We don't have an engineer. We're going to have to contract that out to an engineering firm, you know? And, I mean, I don't know, do these pipes run underground when, on this? Do these pipes run underground when, on this? Are they, are they on top of the ground? I don't, you know, I don't know if they run underground. Do you know? Do they run on...
Well, I, I haven't seen the design. I don't, we're not at the design stage.
I know, but, but, so my point being that if they are underground, that would require a development permit, right? Because that's disrupting soil. So I'm just saying to do a, a unqualified letter of, you know, agreement in principle, it needs to have some qualifications.
Yeah, and I support, and I, and I support that part.
Yeah, okay. So I'll amend the, uh...
You would like to amend?
I'd like to, can I, oh, wait, who made the motion?
That's what I was...
Oh, can I amend with what I just mentioned?
You made a motion for amendment.
Okay, I'll make a motion to amend, um, that we agree in principle provided the project is compatible with our water demands and licensing, it's a new one, the OCP and development permit requirements and a mutual agreement on costs, all to be determined prior to granting final approval.
You were the second.
Did you get all of that?
I was the second.
Yeah, you were.
Yeah. Um, I guess I worry about the timeline. And I, you know, I agree, you know, I'm, I mean, we wanna do things right. And I'm sure they want to do everything right as well. I guess I would've wished that staff would've had that kind of tuck for us, um...
Just found that out, Councilor.
Pardon?
We just found out about the, uh, the water licensing.
No, I'm just talking in general. I mean, there's, you know, there's lots of things to be considered. No, 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 I'm not being critical. Don't be so.
The letter could go right away, just with this amendment, before we do the final agreement. 'Cause we're not talking about doing the final water agreement tonight. We're just talking about the letter.
So the only thing would be the licensing that we would have to do anyway that would be timeline-wise, right?
Yeah, but we're not gonna be, the project's not gonna go through without licensing.
I mean, if we're just gonna have a...
Yeah, no, sorry. Just trying to be convenient.
So, the timeline...
Your worship, I just, I, I'm just a little bit concerned because of the, um, the Red Mountain Racers has clearly said that if we are gonna charge them for the water above this nominal fee, the project for them is not feasible. So when we say that we're gonna do all these other things and including pricing and come back later, if we're gonna go into, get into negotiations about pricing, then I think we need to have some idea of what we're talking about 'cause I'm a little bit concerned, um, that...
Mm-hmm, I agree.
Okay. Fair enough, but to that point, we should be worried about what, what it might cost us. They should be worried about what might cost them. But the city of Roslyn should be worried about what it would cost us to deliver the water. So it's fair. It, it goes both ways. We would like not to, but we, we don't know yet.
We don't have enough information.
We, we don't.
Hmm.
Councilor Blumey, sorry, yeah.
Okay. Well, I was heading towards, this is my question about what are we actually voting for here?
I think, oh, I, I have to stop. And I'm sorry to stop you 'cause you had amended so long. But we have, we have an am- amendment that we have to vote on right away before we have any more discussion.
Can I hear the amendment again?
Yes, please.
Because there were a few details there and I didn't catch them all.
You got it, uh...
Please correct me if I'm wrong. Um, that a, the support be given in principle, um, contemplated with water demand, licensing, OCP, mutual agreement on cost, and there's one other one there.
DP.
Okay, so it was compatible with our water demand licensing requirements, which is the new one. OCP, DP requirements and mutual agreement of costs, all to be determined prior to granting final approval.
So I need that amendment.
I have another question.
Well, we need to move to that amendment first. Move to amend the motion before we continue discussions, right?
We already, oh, no, we didn't, oh, we didn't move the amendment. I'm sorry, we didn't move the amendment.
By Moore.
Okay, who seconded the amendment?
Is that procedurally right?
That's correct. We're doing an amendment?
Yeah. Okay, so now we're gonna vote on the amendment.
But you don't have seconded?
Yeah, we do. You just seconded it.
Well, I seconded the original motion. I didn't second the amendment.
That's true. She did second.
I did not second.
But you held your hand up.
No, I did not.
So then we have discussion on the amendment.
Now, um, yes, so now we're discussing the amendment.
We were discussing it before we had a seconded, however.
Councilor Blumey will now speak. Thank you.
Okay, so where I was trying to head is I support this project. I would like to see it go forward. But if right now what we're saying is okay to, well, which I guess now we're not, but saying okay to that one thousand dollars and that's it. I mean, we need to know what the cost of doing business is before we agree to pay for the business, right? Um, so I feel a lot better with this detailed, somewhat more detailed and, you know, limited motion. Um, now, they had said before that they wouldn't be able to pay for the regular rate of water, whatever that is. But they didn't specifically say if it's more than a thousand, we can't do it. And still, ultimately, we can't take on, you know, if it's going to be a significant amount of money, we can't take that on ourselves, um, on the tax very fast at this point. So we just, we have to, we need to know this before we make the decision.
Yeah, and I'm not comfortable with, with a thousand dollars. I mean, you mentioned the amount of taxes that, uh, that Red Mountain pays, and, and that's correct. And it's, but it also goes, when you speak of water, it goes to everyone in the community pays taxes, and they also pay for water.
And I said that, everyone pays.
Well, you know, considering this stuff. So I just think that that's important and that, you know, if we're gonna get community buy-in here, I think we better make it look like we're being fair, or be, not make it look like, be fair to the community as well, right?
Mm-hmm.
So I, I, I'm not too happy about the thousand dollars. But I'm not adverse to the, to the amendment as written.
So, Christian.
You speak, yeah.
So, I wanted to, through your worship, to clarification from Councilor about the OCP part of it as in, could you make some clarification? And then I have another question.
Well, in our OCP, it talks a lot about, um, land use, right, land use. And when you look at the development permit that Red Mountain has for the ski area, they have to be, they have to comply with the OCP. They have to apply with the sector plans for Red Mountain. They have to comply with Topping Creek best practices, these things. Now, I don't think any of these things are going to be a problem in that regard. But I think we need to make sure that we look at it. We address it. There was no staff report accompanying this. So we haven't had staff's opinion of, is this all compatible? Staff probably can't give us an opinion on that if they haven't seen the design of all this, of this, this setup. And I feel like we're putting the cart, cart of, ahead of the horse just a little bit. I wanna, I wanna go forward with it, but I wanna do it right. And I, and that's where my amendment comes from, right? So I have some things I would say about what I'd like to see from staff before we make our final decision. But I think it would be covered in this amendment that I'm proposing.
Okay, anything further on the amendment?
Yeah, I have a question that you, you made comment about the thousand dollars.
Mm-hmm.
Can you just elaborate?
Oh, I just, no, I'm just not comfortable with just, uh, saying a thousand dollars without...
Without further details, is what you're saying. Yeah.
Thousand dollars for, well, anyway.
Well, I think, I, yeah, I, I think that, I think in fairness, the nominal amount is, is a n- a number, mm, you know, within, I don't know, 'cause we don't know, 'cause we don't have a report with it. Other than, we, we got the great report from the Red Mountain Racers, um, that, you know, we, we shouldn't be dwelling on that number until we have more information firstly. And what they're saying, I think, through that number is that it, that it is only feasible if the amount of payment for the water is a nominal amount of money, whatever that nominal number will mean. That's what I'm saying.
But I think the amendment addresses it by just saying mutually.
Hmm.
So I think the amendment addresses that. I mean...
No, I agree.
From there and mutually is the nominal figure discussed. And we need to figure out what it actually means from our end. That's all.
Yeah, Blumey.
That's absolutely true. We may end up only charging them a nominal amount. But before we agree to it, we need to know what it's gonna cost us.
I agree.
And, and that's the thing. We may still stay with nominal because we support this. We think it's gonna be great economic development. We think for all the right reasons. But it's irresponsible to go in and just say, sure, without knowing the cost to us. So that's what this amendment does, is it gives us a chance to have that. This letter of support in principle could go out tomorrow. And they can go out, you know, beating the bushes for fundraising with that letter. But we still are protected from actually ending, entering into an agreement, which we may decide, oh, my God, we can't, we can't do this for some, at this point, unknown reason. I don't think that's gonna happen. But I just wanna make sure that, you know, we're being thorough in our responsibility.
I agree.
Yeah, so where we're at, so where we're at is, is providing a letter in principle subject to the amendment. Uh, there is another problem with it though, is you mentioned that they can run and go, run with a letter tomorrow. But we don't, we aren't positive as to licensing yet. So, you know, we, we kinda gotta choose two stages here. Before we can say, yes, it's gonna cost you X amount of dollars, we need to know, number one, if we can get the license to do it. And we've been in contact with them, but it's, I'm not sure of the timeline, but it's more than one or two months. So...
Hmm, I... Could just Darren, through your worship, Darren have some information about licensing? Like, could you just give us a...
We're reading later this week, or early next week, when he finds out the, the, um, the, uh, licenser from Nelson, when he finds out more information on our licenses, 'cause they're quite old, so he's unfamiliar with them. So as soon as he finds that out, Tracy and I are gonna go meet with him and find out what the requirements are, or even if it's possible.
So because it's other water, additional water users, is that what it's about though? The additional water users on the...
Right now, the license is for the supply of water to the city of Roslyn.
Right.
Not to the Red Mountain Racers or Red Mountain for other uses than domestic water.
I see. Mm-hmm. Thank you.
Okay, so the amendment, what that'll do, well, okay, but...
Just one other quick comment about that. By, by approving the letter...
Right.
The group can go out and look for grants, even, that, 'cause that's a long process too, right? They can start into that. Even if they were to get grants, you can always turn down a grant. But at least you've started the process, right?
I just wanted to point out that there's other, there's another step that has to go at the same time.
Yeah, no, I understand that.
And without that step in place, we couldn't even say it costs X amount of dollars.
Yeah, I understand that.
Okay, so we got the amendment? Sorry, you wanted to speak again?
No, I didn't.
No, you didn't? Okay, I'm gonna call the question on the amendment. All in favor? Posed, or just carried? Did you get that? Okay, good. Got a little convoluted there for a bit.
Uh, we, we just devoted, we just, we just...
We just voted on the amended motion, so the main motion is...
I thought you said amendment, but I go ahead.
No, the amended motion, sorry, thank you.
So, wait, before we, before we leave this topic, I think, make one of the, we have an opportunity to put sort of a list together of things that we'd like to hear from staff as we go forward with this process.
You can put together a list anytime you want.
Okay, and then you want me just to email it as opposed to having a discussion?
I don't wanna see the Magna Carta if you're asking.
Well, no, but I mean, I'm, it's, it's me after all. Don't expect that.
That's kind of the harder question that you asked.
Yeah, well, I'm just trying to see whether you wanna talk about it now or because it's nine o'clock.
No, you just did a, a, a motion on it in principle, so I, I don't wanna discuss it any further.
Okay, I'll just, I'll circulate it as an email of other concerns I have then.
Yeah, but there's another step involved here, right, from the city's perspective, so...
I understand.
Okay, did she... Information items, motion to receive the information items and act on them accordingly, move by. Fisher seconded by. Blumey, uh, items. Can you give me a letter?
D H J.
D H J, Carrie, what's yours?
Um, it was D.
D, yeah. Anybody else, any others?
I have I and K.
And we should just put these in one at a time, A, B, H, I, J, K. Okay, we had D.
Hmm.
Um, well, I just wanted to just quickly comment on the, the car share program and that it is up and running and, uh, ten members now, I think. And I, I guess I just wanted to comment that, um, when I talked to Alex Lowe, well, actually, and I talked to Anne Demoud, um, that they thought that for businesses in town, the car share program might be really suitable if you needed another car to supplement your business, but you didn't wanna buy another car. And I also just wanted to say that for two car families, that if, you know, really didn't use the second car that much, that the Cutney Car Share Program would be a really viable way of, um, contributing to, uh, less, well, contributing less GHDs to the environment and, um, whilst not having to ha- own two cars. So I just wanted to say that I think it's a great program and hopefully people are gonna start buying into it.
Thank you. Any more on B? See D, her dog. Sue, Carrie.
I just was trying to find a clarification on, they had, um, their minutes. And they had some budget discussions, and it was on page, yeah, is it? Well, there was two. There was one on page four of eight, or whatever it is here.
Number one.
Yeah, the very first one. Four of eight, and they talked about, uh, manager of infrastructure sustainability review to the draft budget and financial plan, noting following aspects that have been included in two thousand and fourteen budget. Approximately fourteen percent increase, eleven percent of the river crossing. Then when you go down to the, a subsequent area, it talks about no, that budget was approved and there was no increases on it. Am I reading that wrong, Councilor Wallace? Can you help me out?
This budget hasn't been approved yet.
Oh, no, you're talking about the Riverdale Park.
Yeah, the, the Riverdale Park, yeah.
Riverdale.
Oh, Riverdale is, yeah, the old Oasis Riverdale is a separate service.
Okay.
That's what's going on. Okay.
Okay.
And I had a question on that. On page five of eight, Director Pichoni expressed concerns regard, very top line, regarding the use of flow meters and flow meter data and impacts of the participating communities. So I wonder if Councilor Wallace could clarify that, if you were there, if you recall.
Yeah, and this is a January meeting. We've had a February meeting since then, and we've been...
I just wondered what his concern was about flow meters.
Well, I mean, there has been a concern about flow meters, um, for a few years now.
About the actual measurement on them?
About the accuracy and about the ones that we have and about, um, the ones that are going to be put in and who will maintain them and, um, we don't, so that may be what he was talking about.
Yeah, well, that's followed up by the general manager saying that they were, um, you know, that part, that they agreed that the plus or minus five percent accuracy. So it must've been something around the accuracy of them. Anyways, I just wondered if...
Okay, on D, anything else?
Yeah, I have something.
I had something too.
Um, so was this meeting before the minutes of settlement came out anywhere where all of these things are sort of determined, right?
This is January seventh.
Right, but didn't the minutes come out after that? The minutes ago, didn't they? I don't know, 'cause it seemed like a lot of this discussion was sort of leading up to that. I had a question on the discussion of the flow station. They talked about this on page fifty-nine. Um, the flow station above Warfield. And so now I'm just wondering, is, is this now the sole responsibility of Roslyn? Or is that shared by Roslyn Warfield? Or is this still under the old agreement since the agreement hasn't been signed?
Yeah.
So it's still, at this point, when they're talking about this...
This is January.
I know.
Are you talking about a flow meter, the cost of a flow meter?
Well, the cost of it, they were, they're talking about the two hundred thousand, two hundred and fifty thousand. Depending, they're, they're talking about all that stuff. So this is, this is all kind of on hold until they get the consultant to come in and make the big...
Well, you know, the budget's being written at this point in time. There's, um, I think it's two fifty that's determined in the budget. It's coming out of reserves for, for all of the long range.
Okay, then.
That is part of the...
And then they were saying they're, they're gonna try and use some of the current flow meters. But I thought the whole problem with the current flow meters is that they're not accurate and that we're gonna be...
Current stations, current where they are.
Oh, locations.
Locations.
Okay, because this says replaced, if the current flow meters can be utilized. So the, but the meters are the interac- inaccurate part, right?
The meters aren't, uh, like your house water meter. They're weers.
Yes.
Right?
Yeah.
So I don't know if those can be calibrated. I don't know all that. But what the big thing was, is, part of the big thing was that if they could use the same station, same location, pipe, the same...
I see, okay.
Whatever.
Okay.
Anything further on D?
Um, yeah, I had one more thing. The discussion there about the Riverdale and Oasis being full partner versus, uh, contract participant. And I'm just, I, I wanted an update on if any of the weighting of the votes has been, has been reopened down the trail because their population isn't as, as high. And we had that discussion a couple of meetings ago.
I know. You supplied me with that information. I actually mentioned it to, uh, the director from Trail.
I bet that went over.
And he called home on it. So I don't know, I mean...
Well, because I'm just thinking, it's right now, if they have four votes, even if Riverdale Oasis got...
It's, it's, I think it's a two-third participant vote. It's not a weighted vote. It's a two-third perc- participant.
Okay.
Um, I think that's the local government, uh...
Okay.
For, for, that's, that's what I was informed.
Okay, um, I mean, in terms of looking at the voting weight, probably, probably the trail representative wouldn't be the one to ask, right? He's never gonna voluntarily give up a vote, but it would be maybe a request that you could make for the...
No, I was talking to him about confirmation.
Right. Oh, he said that that number isn't accurate? Right, oh, he said that that number isn't accurate?
Okay.
In the V C stats, that's interesting. Um, okay.
All right, that's D.
That's D.
H?
Oh, H was me, uh, the bursary for Crow, and I'm just wondering, um, what was that?
I had H as well.
Oh, well, you can go first.
Well, I would like to, because there's some history on those bursaries.
Yeah, cool, you can go first.
Why are you still being so impatient with us?
Well, not, I mean...
Okay, well, that's why we...
I mean, we didn't sit here and have a conversation.
Sorry, you're right, I agree with what you're saying. Anyway, I, I did say H first.
I don't care, go ahead.
Apparently not. Um... So it's, so there's two bursaries that we have given to the RSS students when they were RSS students. The second one was, just for a little bit of history for counselors that don't know, um, the two hundred and fifty dollars City of Roslyn Health Awareness Award came from a grant that I actually secured in my first term for a crystal meth amphetamine grant from the provincial government. And part of the money that I secured for that grant to implement the program within the community, part of that was two hundred and fifty dollars for a health, yeah, health awareness award, they ended up calling that. So that money is no longer, I mean, it hasn't been coming to us since I got that grant. So that was an extra burs, um, scholarship, so I just wanted council to know that, and the City of Roslyn was good enough to carry that on. So prior to that, there was only one scholarship that went to RSS student, which is the first one there. So I certainly, and I also, um, know that in the last couple of years, or I can't even remember how many, that we didn't have a say in who got that health awareness award, and I don't think we had a say in either of the, the scholarships. So if we're gonna continue that scholarship, which we need to talk about, because we do have another, uh, learning center in Roslyn that will have grade twelve students who will graduate, um, I just wanted to bring that up, whether we wanna have two scholarships going down to RSS, and obviously it would be for Roslyn students from my perspective anyway.
Okay, um, I was just wondering, on the first one, what are our parameters? It says it must be a kid from Roslyn, says, uh, well, the first one does, continuing education. But is, or is there anything, does it have to be a person with a high GPA, or can they go to a trade, into a trade program? Can they go, is it college, is it university? Do we wanna put anything on there? Because there's nothing to say who would, you know, any qualification of who do we want, do we wanna say that? Or do we just wanna leave it up to the administrators in Pet Crow to figure that out? Do we care?
Well, I would, I...
Well, I...
Academic criteria has usually been the one for that.
Has it? Okay, 'cause it doesn't say that, right?
But it should be clarified, that's going to a different school.
And then the other one, on the second one, I think it should also say that it's a resident of Roslyn, and then improved healthy living throughout their high school years, and to me, it's like, well, what, what does that mean? I don't know. And then the other thing I would say is that I think it should have a mayor or counselor of Roslyn present the awards. So those are my comments.
Okay, so on...
I'm gonna ask a question.
Yeah, go ahead, ask a question.
Um, some of these have an application form that go along with them. Do you have application forms that go along with you?
Roshan, we do not, we haven't.
Okay, so I think, isn't the discussion that there's two bursaries and if we wanna continue with that, make them subject to be a resident of Roslyn? Is that what the recommendation says? Subject to be a recommendation of Roslyn, and clarification on, uh...
Yes, recommendation that council confirm recipient criteria and scholarship amount. So the recipient criteria was on the first one, Roslyn, um, Roslyn resident, and is continuing in their education. On the second one, we presented to a student who has demonstrated improving healthy living throughout their high school year.
Okay, so if there's discussion, I want you to change those or, or get rid of them, then let's move on with that.
I just have one comment on that, is that, um, in the, I mean, I don't think that this would ever happen, but I guess if we limit it to Roslyn residents, which I tend to agree with, do we create a bit of a division and discussion around when a business in Trail gives a bursary to Crow and says, well, these have to be Trail kids, and Fruitvale does the same, and so we all kinda do the same? Are we trying to promote, um, you know, higher academic standards throughout the community in a broader sense? And I'm, I'm actually not decided. I'm just bringing that up, saying, what, what if everyone was parochial and said, it's just our town? And wouldn't that then have an opportunity to limit some Roslyn kids' opportunities for bursaries from different areas?
Sure they will be anyway.
Well, they might be, they might be.
No, it's a good point.
But I just think that, that the point is valid.
But I'm not sending taxpayers' money to, uh, anyway, I don't even want, I'm not even gonna give my opinion, 'cause you know how I feel about the whole situation, so.
Do we know whether that's the current situation at those bursaries from Crow through you to staff?
Well, I don't know that we know, how would we know that?
Well, I'm thinking, I'm thinking perhaps our staff might know.
No, you worship, we don't, 'cause this is the first year this has happened.
Okay, um, one suggestion we could do is keep the first one that is, uh, Roslyn resident one, and then the second one, instead of sending it to Crow, have it go to seven summits, who have grade twelves. Do they have grade twelves?
Yeah, it's eight to twelve. I don't know how many they have or would be graduating this year. I didn't have time to find that out, but I could.
I, I think that summits is, is a separate item. This is, this is about the...
Request from Crow, yeah.
Going to Crow.
Mm-hmm, I know.
So if you don't wanna, if you don't wanna send two to Crow, say so. And that's moving here, because I'm talking about two things for two hundred and fifty bucks. And, uh, you know, maybe the residency thing could be, Roslyn residents would get preference or whatever, I don't know, and quite frankly...
You know what? We could leave it the way it is, because the second one doesn't say anything about Roslyn, the first one does. So one's Roslyn and one could be anybody with healthy living. How about that? Leave it.
Okay, Council Wall, suppose you make a question.
Well, um, I don't, I don't see, she wasn't saying she needs this information back immediately, and I would suggest that we ask, um, we ask our staff to contact, uh, Pat Sidey and ask these questions and, and see how we should proceed, because this is a big transition. This is, um, you know, it, it, this was well established and it made sense previously, but we've got a lot of questions about what makes sense now, and we don't know.
Well, I have a different suggestion, just 'cause we got, say we got a phone call going from our staff down the hill, back to us, and it becomes a back and forth, and we got staff doing that. I would support the motion as is, the way that it is, and leave it on the docket for, just a letter going down. In future years, we'd like to know, could you please report on us if there are residency requirements for all your bursaries and scholarships and list them? And then they could provide it as a letter to us that just comes back, and then we can review it. We've already approved it tonight, and it goes through the way that it is now. One's a Roslyn resident, one's open to whoever.
And they can take that one off the list, that's what you're saying.
And then, and then the staff doesn't have to phone, they just send this one thing to Pat, and then Pat sends it back and provides it as an information item for this council to make a decision on next year. But hopefully it looks like an olive branch from us for all the other communities that are involved with Crow. There's a lot of communities, I mean, Warfield doesn't have a high school, and Fruitvale used to have one, and we used to have the, you know what I mean? So there's a lot of kids there.
Okay, so, go ahead.
Well, I wouldn't imagine they would stipulate when Fruitvale and all of the kids, everyone else has gone to Crow. I mean, most of them, the criteria is, you know, either academic, or whatever the criteria is. And they're not gonna say, oh, you're from Fruitvale, you don't get it, 'cause I, I wouldn't think. So it's, it is a good point, you know, it's a, it's a sore spot for me, and the second one particularly, because I did all the work to get that, and, you know, maybe it shouldn't even be going, or we should combine it, because, I don't know. I'd like, personally, I'd like to see Roslyn kids getting those, those scholarships. And why? Because, yeah, I'm still sore about the whole, um, decision.
Okay, so that's, what is the staff recommendation, and I'm sorry, I don't have the...
Confirm, uh, confirm recipient criteria and scholarship amount.
And that's as is, right? Okay, everybody happy with that? Thank you. And if somebody wants me to phone Pat, I'll phone Pat and ask her a question, 'cause I know her.
Sure.
Yeah, and I know her too, so, yeah, and she lives in Roslyn, so, but, I'm, I shouldn't be the one phoning, you could phone her, that'd be great.
Okay. So that's all of that, I hope. Bye. U B C M?
Yeah, I was me, actually, there, there's not much. I just, I just thought it was interesting that we had our two motions about, uh, schools, and basically the province said, we already give more money and we're not doing anything else.
Same old answer.
Disappointing, but not surprising. That's it.
Any more on that? J?
I had something on K, but I don't remember.
J?
Oh, I had K.
K, no J.
K, oh, K?
Oh, I had J.
K.
You forgot J, J comes with J.
I said J, and no one's...
That was me. Never mind, I forget what it was, something with the Heritage Commission, but I forget. Don't worry, carry on.
K.
K, I just wanted to say, I think it's a great project that they're doing this trail building, and I really think that, um, our youth action network is head and shoulders above what other groups are doing. I talked to somebody from C B C, C B T, who said that the Roslyn group is really charging ahead and making great progress in, in, um, all their youth programming and getting the involvement of youth, and I think Mike Kent's doing a super job. And this new one is, is great, so.
Go ahead.
Well, just as far as trail building goes, um, as I was reading it, what occurred to me, and I realized afterwards that, um, you know, this is beneficial to Red and they've already got those agreements in place, but it's going back to a discussion that we've had previously about how many trails does our community need? And, um, we're getting to the point where, you know, maintaining the trails that we have has to be a consideration. So I, I appreciate that there's, um, there's training involved in, in teaching the youth how to build trails, but perhaps in the future, they can switch that up a little bit and teach them how to maintain them.
I don't get how you have to train somebody to build a trail, but anyway, that's just my personal thing.
Not too...
Technical, it's infrastructure, and you're the pipe guy.
Long way from pipe, as far as I know.
Still infrastructure, go out and, go out and ride a few of them.
All right, so that, on the, on the motion, all in favor? Opposed? Carry. Uh, bylaw ten, motion that bylaws twenty-five forty-five Waste Collection Service rate bylaw twenty-fourteen be adopted, move by. Fisher seconded by. Blooming, discussion, hold.
I have one question. Um, nowhere in it does it mention anything about how often it's collected or the fact that we're only gonna do one a year, and maybe it doesn't need to be in the bylaw. And I know the manager of public works, that there'd be a notice sent out announcing that, but should, should it be somewhere in the bylaw that says how often we collect?
Collect our garbage?
Garbage and the annual cleanup.
I don't think it's necessary.
Okay, that was just my, my only point.
Okay, on that, all in favor? Opposed? Carried. Uh, electric fence from Stacy, Lakerin Funding Department, the council will run first and second reading of bylaw twenty-five sixty-five and set a public hearing for March twenty-fourth. Is there a mover to that?
I'm gonna make a motion to refer.
Move by Fisher?
Oh.
Second.
Seconded by Wall. Discussion?
Yeah, I just, I actually think that we, um, again, may not have enough information after I looked at everything that we've, that we had on this, and we, you know, one meter, this, all that stuff that we talked about, um, before. Same sort of stuff. Um, I was actually wondering if there was a easy way out of it. And, um, I didn't get a chance to, I was just gonna call a buddy of mine who was a lawyer, just to see if there's an easy way out in terms of the bylaw, just to say, you know, must be safe and meet all CSA standards. Must be safe and meet all CSA standards in the city, won't be a liable for any, whatever. Because think about all the other things that people have in their yards. Some people have pools, they have playing apparatuses, they have all kinds of things, and you can get injured on any of that stuff. An electric fence is just one more thing in your yard, um, so you should be responsible for it. And we have a bylaw allowing them, because they're a structure, I guess. So I, when I looked at it, I, because we also got the email from Andrew Bennett, and he made some good points in his email. And really, I was less concerned about the one meter thing. I mean, I might disagree with him on that, and you could have a coffee and disagree all day long on the distance, so I don't mind that we leave the one meter in. But in terms of the actual, the difference in the way we've written the bylaw, when, when we talked about the voltage as opposed to the, uh, what was that?
Current.
The current.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I think that matters, if we're gonna keep the bylaw the way that it is. So I think there would still be, I, I wanted to get up to talk about it, but I think there's still work to be done on this, sorry.
I think that would be the, I like your first statement about just the blanket things, they make them safer.
I know.
But, uh, I think after we give first and second reading, then we have public hearing, then we'll get all that information, and then we can tune up the bylaw.
Sure.
That's true.
That's what we do.
'Cause the, the other point in Andrew's email was about temporary, um, the need to just move them around, and whether, um... But, as you say, we can deal with that later.
Yeah, well, we're gonna get, we're gonna get, public, get...
I didn't read the, I didn't see the email that you guys are referring to with Andrew Bennett, but, um, anyway, it doesn't matter. I wrote, no, I don't wanna see electric fences in the bylaw, I just don't, I think we could have guidelines, maybe, guidelines, I mean, but, um, I'm just excited I don't want to do the bylaw.
Councilor?
Um, well, I was gonna make a motion to refer, because I think there are, there is more work to be done on this, and I'd rather just revert and have it come back, rather than have it due first and second, and then fail then, and, you know, go back. Um, the main thing was, out of Andrew's, uh, email, I like his idea to strike the voltage clause and let the approved charger requirement take, take care of that, so I'd like to see that in there. And I'd like to see it design more flexibility in the setback provision. And, I mean, I don't know if we could do this, but if we could make it, if the neighbors agree, like if a neighbor, like if there's a fence on the property... Well, I know, maybe not.
No, man.
Anyway, because I do see there's a challenge with the one meter setback.
Does this make good neighbors?
Yes, does this make good neighbors?
We have a good neighborhood bylaw.
And I also wanted to see something in there to allow temporary, um, fencing. So I'm gonna vote against the bylaw at this point and make a motion to refer.
Motion to refer takes precedence, so if you wanna make a motion to refer, you can do that right now.
Okay, I'll make a motion to refer to let staff tidy it up a bit with some, with that, with that email from Andrew. Look at that email from Andrew and make some adjustments.
Seconded to the motion to refer. Is there a discussion on a motion to refer?
Hmm, I don't think so.
I think it referring to, for...
Refer back to staff?
Yeah.
Yes.
Well, I, I don't...
Just call the question.
Well, I know, because I think a motion to refer back to staff, quite frankly, once we get to a public hearing, we're gonna get more stuff from the public, so I don't know why we just don't go to the public and ask them the questions and then tune it up then. I mean, Stacy's obviously been through this at Infinitum and made her recommendations, and now it's up, we're gonna need some information from the public. A motion to refer back, what, what is Stacy gonna do?
Well, she's gonna take out the voltage clause, allow temporary fencing.
We can take that out. We can take that out when we get public input. I mean, that's what the emails that we just got, she never got those emails, we didn't get those emails till today, so we're getting input now, that'll, that'll tune this thing up. I mean, I kind of agree that I, I don't even think this is...
I don't think we need it.
We're wasting a whole bunch of time here, but if, all right, so anyway, on the motion to refer, is there any further discussion of refer back to staff? Anything further discussion on that?
Well...
On the motion to refer?
Yes.
Yeah.
'Cause I haven't said anything. Um, interestingly enough, uh, yeah, you know, I, I haven't been in favor of this since the, the visit from one citizen in Roslyn. And, you know, there's certain things that sometimes just, I don't know, just leave it alone and let people figure it out, right? Like, if you want, talk about your neighbors, talk to your neighbors about it, and if you can't figure it with your neighbors, then, I don't know, figure it out with your neighbors. But, you know, really, I mean, and I know we've already gone to all this, Stacy's already gone to all this work, and council spent time on it, et cetera, but from the get-go, I honestly thought that it's unnecessary. So that's just my opinion.
Okay, so the mo, we're speaking to the motion to refer.
Yes.
All right, so on that motion, all in favor? Opposed? Motion's defeated. On the main motion that we provide first and second reading to bylaw, set a public hearing, moved and seconded by, it's done, right? You got that, Trace? Further discussion on that?
Can I make an amendment?
Yeah.
Okay, so I would say let's strike the voltage clause and let's, uh... Okay, so I would say, let's strike the voltage clause, and let's, uh, uh, oh, boy. Do I have to put the exact wording, can I say, can I just say that we'll allow, have a provision to allow temporary? Can I do that, or do I have to be more, have to have to be more specific?
What is your intention?
Putting temporary fencing in there now?
Yeah.
No, you're not, no, that's a whole new bylaw, that's a whole, that's outside of, that's just a, that's not an amendment to this bylaw.
Okay, 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 just, okay, strike that, just strike the voltage clause, let the approved charger requirement take care of that portion of it. That's my amendment.
Okay, so the motion is provided first and second reading with the amendment to strike the voltage clause?
Yeah.
And then, is there a seconder to that amendment, I guess? My goodness.
No. I'm not even voting for this, I'm not moving.
Getting tired.
Okay, there's no seconder, so back to the main question, first and second reading about twenty-five sixty-five instead of public hearing. All in favor? Posed? Motion's defeated.
I'm not that interested, I don't know, where are we doing now?
The bylaw dies.
The bylaw dies.
The bylaw dies. There we go.
Members' reports, Counselor Spear.
Oh.
There we go.
Yeah, I, I would rather not go first, cause I'm gonna find it.
Counselor.
Okay, I don't have much, um, I mean, I've been doing meetings, but nothing's finalized yet, so I'll report it at the next one. Um, but what I do wanna talk about, I missed a meeting, it's on February eleventh, I think, it seems that council had a little discussion about fire service and the cost to the community, and I completely agree with having that discussion, I was disappointed that there was no action taken, and certainly, there's no urgency attached to this, but I would suggest that we should ask our staff to compile a cost benefit analysis, a comparison with, with other municipalities paying, and give us some sort of an idea of, um, even, even have it in the works and prepared for the next council coming in, so that we can look at fire service and decide what this community wants to do about it. So, if it, if that's okay with council, I would make a motion to ask staff to begin to supply us with some sort of cost benefit analysis on our co, our tax requisition to the fire service.
Okay. Seconded?
Seconded by Counselor Gore.
Just let me.
I don't know, but the motion is seconded, so we go to Walz. I, you wanna speak to any?
Hmm?
You wanna speak to any more?
I don't.
Counselor.
No, I'm like, I agree, I think we need to look at it.
I, I, I'm trying to recollect, I thought we did, we've done that in the past, and I don't know, it wasn't this council maybe, but if staff look back, however you search for past reports, because I'm sure we've had something that come back before. When I've had, since I've been on council, maybe it was three ago or something, but.
I remember something quite a long ago.
Do you remember? Yeah, and I remember asking, and we talked about it, and it, some report has come back to council with cost benefit kind of ideas about voluntary, volunteering all that, was that?
Mr. Kumar did, or something.
I think you did a lengthy report.
Yeah, yeah, so.
But I, I know that it wasn't before that, but I think, I think, I think, correct me if I'm wrong, but the intent is just, if we can present the costs of our community compared to costs of other communities, our size, I mean, that, it doesn't have to be a big lengthy.
Well, I'm just saying, we don't have to reinvent it if, you know, a lot of that work has, the groundwork has been done.
I understand that too, but when we say report.
Just to report back.
What are we asking, I mean, we ask, I mean, cost comparisons between municipalities, I think that's fair, and I think that's, that's not too onerous for me to make.
But I've.
Phone calls, and I've already made a few. And, uh, I don't really wanna get going on that report, but, anyway, so just leave it with that motion. You wanna speak to the motion? Yep?
I vaguely remember that Mr. Kumar said that that, you know, that analysis that he did, whenever that was, that I think the threshold where, you know, he said we gotta look at it again, um, where we're not paying for it, so it wasn't a mark, so, I mean, it definitely makes sense to do it again.
But, I mean, I think we can just bring that report down.
Yeah, I mean, they don't have to start from scratch.
I have the date somewhere in the north.
They don't have the report.
It's pretty easy, so just a sec, but we can get that, and then, I'm just speaking to what information we want, right? So, the staff knows where we're going with this, right, now the report, we want, is what we want, the information of service levels, uh, cost per household or something like that for the parcel, including whatever, that's pretty easy.
With the intent, so with the intention of alternate, alternative possibilities, I came in a little bit late when, I think Counselor Fisher was speaking to it last week, and, so I didn't hear that.
That was the intent.
Yeah, and so the intent is, how can we do it differently?
Well, there is.
Yeah.
In relative terms to other communities, if Roseland is, if we're exceeding for the service that we're, um, that we're paying for, if we're, if significantly exceeding, from what I'm anecdotally told, that we're significantly exceeding the amount, um, that we're paying for the service that we have, then, um, if it is that, the case, then, I think that at some point, we go to the, at a point in the near future, we go to the regional district and say, "This community can afford to pay this much for fire service."
Mm-hmm.
And you are providing it at this level for this much, you'll have to reduce it, and if not, then we'll have to look for alternatives. I mean, the, the community needs to have a say in what type of fire service that they have. All the other communities do, and because we're part of a regional service, it seems that a regional approach is taken to what kind of regional services required, not necessarily what's just required for the city of Roseland.
That's right, and I think, we can go on this one all night, but, uh, the Manning report, Moore report, Sussex report, all those reports stated that the individual municipalities should be able to set the service levels.
Pretty sure.
And their level of taxation.
Can I just say something else, because it's pertinent? Um, if you look at the two resolutions going from the regional district to the AKPLG, one of them speaks about the BT ambulance service and some of the changes that have happened there, and the reason that we're speaking about it is that communities deserve the right to set the level of service that they decide they want to have. And I found that pretty ironic when I heard that stated at the regional district board table, just pointing that out.
Okay, so the.
So, yes, I, I just think we need to start putting information in front of us that makes sense of it and proceed.
So, do we speak to the motion again, or are we all in the same page?
Well, I just wanna, I just, you know, say that it, you know, this isn't the first time that this has been to this council in this conversation, because Mr. Kumar did, uh, bring us a report, and, so this has been an ongoing concern for the, for the, this council and previous councils about the fire costs, and again, I, you know, I have to reiterate again that, you know, we in our community have no industrial tax base, and we are getting to the point where things are just unaffordable, and so we have to make it affordable, because people have to be able to afford to live in our community, or we're not gonna have any people here, living here, because it's becoming exorbitant. And the regional district costs are a, a major part of that problem.
Okay, so it's a pretty simple motion, after all that conversation. Uh, do you need clarification, Trace? Nope, okay, on that all in favor? Posed, carried? We're on members' reports.
Right.
Anything else?
I'm done for now.
Thank you, you got any?
Okay, I just have, um, when we had our AGLG meeting, um, here, I could not be at the Chamber of Commerce meeting because they were the same time and I was here, so, um, just a couple of points, the report from the chamber with regards to the Rotary Building, um, will be submitted formally to council pretty quickly, they've done some numbers in the design, looked at the kind of cost of renovations and the feasibility around that in order to bring it to council, so that will be coming. And also, the chamber has taken down, I don't know if you know about the Bowes and the Garland's that are downtown over Christmas, the chamber puts those up and pays for those and takes them down, so just that little beautification part, I think it's important that we recognize that it's the chamber and their efforts that, um, have done that. And, other than that, um, hmm, uh, I think that's all, oh, I know. This, I've brought this up before to council, it's about the sandwich boards downtown that advertise businesses, and I really think, and I will make a motion if required, that the Design Review Committee needs to have, give some input with regards to the look of those sandwich boards, some of them are, um, in my mind, are, um, how would I say, ghastly, and some of them fit in. Well, some of them are, yeah, are not very appealing for our downtown core, and some of them are fine, and I, no, I'm serious, because we've got this design, um, you know, um, uh, criteria qualifications for downtown, and then you got these, you know, hand-printed, like the one outside of Bank of Montreal, it's on a chalkboard, and it's all, you know, scribbled, so I think it needs to, to go to the Design Review Committee for some conversation, so, do I need a motion?
I don't know how we're gonna.
Well, I think they need to come up with some criteria, design criteria for sandwich boards.
But is there already, I don't know.
Your worship, there's not, and the design guidelines, sandwich boards are omitted from that, so it's not part of the Design Review Panel, um.
Okay, so, okay, so you wanna make a motion that that become part of, that we develop guidelines for sandwich boards?
Exactly.
Seconder.
Motion. I don't even care what those look like.
I'll second it for discussion.
Well.
It, but, but, and, I think Counselor Spear has had her discussion, the only thing I'll say is, I think it's important to let the business people, you know, have some latitude, I mean, you can be encouraged to be designed, but we don't wanna legislate every single thing, so.
Okay, anything further on sandwich boards?
Yes, then, um, that's fine, we don't have to necessarily regulate through the Design, um, Review Committee, but I think that there needs to be some guidance. So, anyway, that's all I'll say, cause I think some of them are terrible.
Okay, so we have a motion, on the motion, all in favor?
I see.
Posed?
All in favor.
Motion's defeated.
Okay, well, I'm gonna go around to some of those businesses and then chat them. As part, as a liaison from the Chamber of Commerce, how's that?
That's perfect.
To the chamber.
Okay, that's, uh, do you have any more, because we have.
No, I don't.
No, you're good? Counselor Blooming?
Um, I will be getting together in the near future with the COO, the Chief Operating Officer, I guess, of CBBC, um, to hear some news, and so my next drive, I guess, I'll have some more specific, otherwise, business review.
Okay.
Sorry, Jody, when do you want to meet with them?
In the very near future, probably next week.
Counselor.
Okay, um, the Economic Development Task Force through the SC has requests for use of the Miners Hall for a nonprofit collaboration night, this idea was actually originally, I think, the mayor's idea, a couple of years back, um, that the city would sponsor an event where we get our local nonprofits together and find synergy and find ways they can collaborate and, you know, that whole thing. Um, anyway, the Economic Development Task Force has taken it up as an idea, offered to coordinate it, but, um, they don't have any budget to speak of, so they were going to ask if we would approve them to use the Miners Hall at, without a fee, and the dates to be announced, they had a date and it fell through, one of their speakers couldn't come. So, anyway, I make the motion that we, um, allow them the use of the Miners Hall for this event, which benefits the whole city, it's not a private group doing it, it's all nonprofits, and was a city initiative initially. Seconded.
It was an idea, it wasn't an initiative, seconded by Spear. Further?
No, I think I've pretty much said it.
All in favor? Carried.
Good, thanks. Um, I attended the fire service review, I let the mayor speak to it, I just wanted to say, the mayor did a very good job of pointing out the report did not address our concerns, um, it also was disappointing and it didn't really offer significant cost savings or efficiencies that we were looking for, and I was particularly disappointed that the consultant came to the conclusion that it, we were paying fair value for the service, but he only presented to other communities, one that charged more than we, more than, you know, the regional district pays, and one that charged less, to say, "There, see, we're all good," um, and that was, to me, that was totally inadequate presentation of, of a cost analysis, but, anyway, that's my opinion on that, but the mayor did a really good job. Um, in your absence, Counsel, Counselor Walz. Um, the LCCDT, I was unable to attend the last meeting, but I got info on it, uh, the attainable housing committee got their preliminary approval, and they're now looking to work with a realtor and find properties for, um, the program that they put the grant in for. Energy committee's still working on getting Fordus to assist with the rate disparity issue, ongoing effort to get the rates more competitive will help all, everybody in the region, they'll still try and work on that. Airport was turned over to Trail February fifteenth, there's a new manager there, and the metallurgy group is doing a cool thing, they are networking with UBC and local employers, and also Selkirk, um, to set up a co-op learning program that'll bring, um, um, different enterprises into, into the region that can hopefully, hopefully partner with some of the businesses that are here, um, so it's an effort to expand economic development regionally. And then there's still the issue of Roseland's lack of participation in funding the group, but I'm still invited to attend until they make some final decision, so let that go. Um, we had had a discussion at one point about getting an engineering firm on contract, and I would request that this be tendered, we've just had one discussion of one, something forward to one company, but I think it's appropriate that that's something that's tendered, not a single, not a sole source thing. Um, do I need to make a motion to that effect?
You better.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we tender, um, an engineering firm, if we're looking for an engineering firm on contract, that we tender it.
Seconded.
And I think the importance of that is that, that one of the things that we've been learning over and over with our experience this year is that we need to make sure that we follow our own procurement policies on things, um, and that would be following it. Don't think I have more to say on that.
I think we've got a bit of an issue there, that there might be some more information that we need before we can make that decision, I'm not sure, Derek, can you talk to that?
Well, my, I'm concerned that there's a lot of projects that their ISL is already involved in, and so if we are going to go to tender, um, do I continue on with those projects that have, that they've already, you know, spent, already spent money on, or, because I do not have a contract with them, um, or do we just put everything on hold until we tender, um, that consulting?
My thinking would be, you'd continue things that you've already got underway, but if we're looking to get an engineering firm on a, on a contract basis, like on, like a, not a retainer exactly, but have them be our go-to guys, we should have that, we should have that tendered.
How would you tender them? Hourly rate?
You have to do, I don't know, we can do an RFQ.
Is that what's seconded by Spear?
We can do an RFD.
Yeah, um. There should be sole sourcing stuff, without a D P.
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, well, I don't, I don't totally disagree with it, but I don't, um, I don't know, I mean, on, generally speaking, on, like if we're, I would assume, and I think this is something that we probably need to have a discussion of, but if you're having a major project coming up, I think you still need to tender that engineering out the door, so there's that issue, so I think that ought, to me, that would be an automatic, that we would tender projects of significance, whatever they are, but if there are smaller things going, uh, going on in the city of Roseland, and, and there is a, say there's three local structural firms, if they happen to be structural, or civil firms that happen to be civil, um, and we're not, and it's not a specific tendered type of project, but it's something that could be an hour, just an hourly thing, I mean, I think you would look at the hourly rate of all of them, and, and you might be able to sole source in those particular cases, but on, on projects of significance, when I don't know exactly what, under the procurement policy, we have a threshold, um, that already requires it, and I'm sure with the procurement policy, we're gonna look further. But I was looking at, you know, it's a double-edged sword, so say you tender something, or you put a, a request out, or a proposal, and you get that sole source that you, that, uh, deal with, now you're stuck with them, not really stuck with them, but you're going to them more often, I kinda like the idea of, you know, using, I kinda like the idea of, using one firm all the time and then throwing them out, throwing some work out to someone else, to keep them honest, if you know what I mean?
Mm-hmm.
So, it's kind of a strategy, but if you just say you're gonna get all the work all the time, then you got.
Derek, you wanna speak anymore to that?
Yeah, I think, um, I was, I was here on the, on the, on the latter part of Urban Systems, being on this hall, and then. And then of course we went from Urban Systems to hire an in-house engineer. We lost a lot of knowledge leaving Urban Systems the way that we did. Then we hired our own engineer, which I felt worked well. For, you know, having an in-house, a go-to person, now I no longer have that. I no longer have, we have nobody, you know, well, we have nobody in planning, we're down on the planet. And, and I don't disagree with going to tender, but it's, it's, I need somebody now. Like, there's, there's things that come across my plate that I shouldn't even be attempting to, to look in, look into, answer because it's, it's above my head. And, but having the consistency of having, and I'm just gonna use ISL or I can use Urban Systems, um, they knew our city, they knew our water model, they knew our sewer, they, you know, they know our pressures. I just, if we went to tender and hired a firm that has an office in Nelson, for example, because I had, just had, I just had somebody email me the other day asking if we are going to, um, to tender. Now we're paying travel time from Nelson, they don't have an, an office in Roslin, nobody, I don't, well, maybe there's one other consultant in Roslin. Um, so that, you know, it's important that we have that local knowledge for quicker responses. And I, and, and to Counselor Fisher, I have, I have looked at hourly rates. I mean, hourly rates can be great from a firm from Kelowna, but the travel time's gonna kill us. So what I mean is, I'm not sure how I would do a tender as far as hourly rates, as far as travel time, you know, as far as consistency and as well as practical. It's, sometimes it's tough to find an engineer that will also be practical. And, you know, right there, we can save a lot of money on, on doing stuff, not to this standard, but to a standard that's acceptable. So it's another concern.
Well, I, I think, as stated, if there's a, on a project-by-project basis, if you need engineering on a major project, it goes to tender, right?
Yes.
Yes, so on a day-to-day operation, you have someone that, that knows the city, that, uh, are local. I mean, it just makes sense to be able to use somebody on a day-to-day basis. So, on the motion to go to tender...
Or, I'm just saying, there's, there are, there, there is another local engineering firm. I, I just feel like if, the, the proposal was to find somebody to sort of take the place of our in-house engineer. And to me, that's a, that's a, a project in and of itself, yes, when there's a big, when there's a big project out, of course you're gonna go out and put that to tender. But this is a project in and of itself, and I feel like we need to go to tender on this stuff. And in the end, maybe you're gonna end up with ISL or Urban Systems or Focus, or maybe you will find the person from Nelson is the right person. But without going to tender, you won't know. And that's the position we found ourselves in at other times in our municipal life here, and it hasn't been pretty. And I think, you know, I just think, I think we should, I think we should go to tender on it.
Well, I think we'd be wasting our time, I think, go ahead.
Um, I can't completely disagree, by any means, um, but I guess what I'm wondering, and I'll use this as an example, because how do we develop these relationships? How does the community develop these relationships? And I, and I appreciate what Darren's saying, that's important for stuff, to have that, um, that relationship established and there and ready when we need it. And with that, um, with that depth of knowledge of the community and everybody else. So as an example, how do we develop the relationship with our legal counsel? Um, where's that come from?
With our, what?
Was that something that went to tender at some point in time?
What did you say, you meant what counsel?
Legal.
Legal.
Oh.
It was just selected by the C A O, wasn't it?
If I may ask that, your worship?
Well, I don't know.
We use three different legal counsel.
Depending on the nature of the... Because do we have something in policy that we should follow?
We have a procurement policy, we're putting out contracts, we're supposed to be putting out pretenders.
Darren was to say something. According to the purchasing policy, there, there is, um, there's a section in there that refers to consultants and that we don't need to go to a tender. Um, I'm sure Tracy can send you guys a copy, I thought I, I thought I sent a copy to everybody.
Yeah.
And, you know, for an example, the swimming pool, I have to do an audit on the flooring, that's counsel, that already, you know, basically approved me to go ahead with getting on that because it won't be open till summer. I did not use ISL. I found out the companies that, that specialize in that and I hired them, for example. Um, you know, so, if there is, if there is a situation out there that there, there's other firms that specialize, you know, more in that, of course I'm gonna use them, you know. And I would hope that our in-house engineer, you know, has, has the knowledge to, and, and, you know, the honesty to say, no, that's not our, that's not really our field, so...
Okay, so basically I've got a suggestion from what I've been learning very recently, so, um... Um, basically, a, a process could be to, to kind of get the paperwork and the structure in place to kind of typically, you know, take the right boxes and stuff. It's basically, we could go to an RFQ, where basically an RFQ is just an expression of interest. So we could put that out there in terms of, companies could express an interest in terms of they would like to do the engineering work for us. So, everybody, all they have to do on that is that it's no prices involved, we don't wanna know about pricing, it's just we wanna know what qualifications you've got and whether that would suit our needs. So say you get seven companies come forward. Out of that, we could immediately say, well, say four of them are far too afield for us and they don't have the local knowledge, you could rule them out. From there, you could then put a proposal, a, a, an RFP together, which basically says, come forward with an hourly rate, um, of, you know, to do the engineering work for us. Um, obviously ISL would probably hang ri, uh, highly on that because they're here, they've got the local knowledge, it's not gonna cost us on the hourly and the travel. Um, and from there, you could then potentially put a contract in place, so we've, you know, we've moved forward in terms of making sure we've got the relevant contracts in place.
But, but the, when you get to the tender process, it, it, also not every, not the lowest bid is necessarily accepted anyway. So you're gonna go with the people, so you're gonna go with the people that have the knowledge anyway.
Yeah, but what I'm saying is though, is that, that's why you go for an RFQ, so it takes a little bit longer, but, you know, it would ultimately kind of, if you, if you just went straight to RFP though, you could, yeah, you could have the light, the lowest hourly rate in Kelowna, but that doesn't necessarily mean it's the best one. So that's why you go to an RFQ to narrow it down.
Well, I...
A suggestion of what we could do with the process.
It's a good suggestion.
What's the motion, please? Trace?
City, go to tender for contracting engineering firm on a contract basis.
Okay, and part of the, you know, I, I don't mind motions at this time, but part of the problem with that is, we get into these discussions and we don't have enough information, right? We need, you know, so that makes it hard to pass this kind of motion because we could be discussing this all night long.
I'll, I'll just say that I'll be voting against it, uh, based on the way the motions were, because of my concerns around, um, not, uh... If it's engineering, you could get yourself into, you know, you, you could get yourself into a legal situation where you've committed to this company and they may or not, I mean, yes, they all have professional standards and they charge you a certain rate, but you don't, you don't have the opportunity to have a check on them from time to time. And I think it's pretty important to have a check on them and not have it a tendered contract where you're basically guaranteeing them engineering work from the city of Roslin. So I think the, the wording of the motion would have to be changed and then there's quite a bit more to it than just that.
Okay, let's take, please.
I haven't said anything, so I seconded it.
Can I clarify, can I clarify what I, what I was going after though? Because I think it will address Counselor Fisher's concerns. My concern was the proposal that was brought forward by our Public Works Manager of getting a contract for engineering services. So if we went to the RFQ idea, he could design it, so it may, so it may, instead of just going sole source to one engineering firm, put it out there, see who else may have those qualifications. I mean, I don't know, maybe there's somebody else in Trail or there is the other company in Roslin or whatever. So it would be up to staff to design it, so we wouldn't get into that ball of wax you're talking about because it would be designed to meet the needs of the public works.
I could, I, I need to, I, I think, well, getting late.
Ten o'clock, we need to extend the meeting.
When we had a former company doing the sole work for the city of Roslin, um, my goodness, it was, it was, it was a lot of problems. And it was, to me, um, we didn't get the kind of service, um, that I thought that should have been getting for the value that we were being charged. And so I think that having that single relationship is not good. I think that you need to have a go-to person that you're going to, but you still need to check pricing and still need to send some work somewhere else so that you can keep them honest. It seems like it would.
Counselor, please.
Well, I'm just trying to check.
I need a motion to extend the meeting, please.
I'll make a motion to extend the meeting.
Second or? All in favor? Counselor Spear?
Well, hm, I am, you know, I am, and don't disagree with the, the intention of the motion, but I also know that we have not had, and I, and I, I find it interesting, Darren says it was good when we had the in-house engineer because that was never the way it was presented to council. However, that's yesterday. Um, you know, I think with having, and, you know, I don't know about the other company in Roslin, because I know about ISL because we've dealt with ISL with some of these projects, these big projects. Um, but to ha, you, you know, Darren has said, and he has said it many times before, that he needs someone to go to, across the street and go and talk to Richard, the new guy in, what's the other guy's name? Whatever his name is, and go outside and stand downtown and talk about things right at source. I think that's hugely valuable, hugely valuable. As a go-to everyday engineering firm for us, it would be the same as having an engineer in here and it would be the same as we used to phone Urban Systems and spend lots and lots and lots and lots and lots of money. So, I'm not, I'm not, um, against having that go-to engineer right here because I think it's important. And the same time, I also agree, we do have to put things out to tender when it's appropriate time to put things out to tender. So I don't really know how I wanna vote on the motion because I agree with principle, but I think that, you know, Darren is that person who's telling us that that's a valuable resource that we have right here and he's been, we've been using them and they know us and they know every, all this, all the infrastructure issues, et cetera. So, I'm, I, I just don't know if it's, you know, if it's appropriate to even have this vote right now.
Counselor?
There will be not a cut and dry issue, so we shouldn't be dealing with it right now. And I voted against continuing the meeting, did anybody else?
No, I, I could though, I could. Especially if it's an in-camera, that, forget the working part. Okay, let's move on because, I mean, this is ridiculous.
Can we just defer it? Because I would talk about it more later, just defer it.
I was thinking, is there a referral to staff for recommendations?
No, 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 you don't defer it.
Just to pound the gavel, I suppose.
Yeah, on the, on the motion, all in favor? Boz?
It's defeated.
At this point in time.
So we, yeah, I haven't finished.
I know, and I, I'm gonna, I'm gonna say no and I, I'm gonna have to make, well, we can't have these motions at members' reports.
No.
Okay, but here's the thing, the last time when I brought notice of motion, you said, why don't you just do it here to me? So I did.
I know, Counselor, but, you know, we're getting into...
Well, this was because...
Quantity.
Okay, but this was because this engineering contract had come forward to us as a proposal. I know, I know, so I was addressing something that had been brought, because we haven't, we haven't, I don't know when we're gonna discuss the ISL contract, right? Because it was brought forward to us as a proposal, Darren wanted to go forward, we'd never talked about it. So that needs to come on a, to come on an agenda at some point for us to either decide we want to approve that contract or we don't. So, anyway, okay, um, I have a question to staff about the recreational lake project that I read about in a newspaper, that there was something in, by Dunn near Lyons Park. There was a proposal to make a lake down there some years ago, there's supposed to be a fully formed report somewhere. Does anybody know about it?
Yes, we know about it.
Profili Lake, yeah.
He was on council then, he was on council.
Okay, well, I'm, I'm curious to see, because we've talked about, we, we have this idea out there that maybe we'll make a rec lake out of one of our reservoirs, and then there was this other idea and I thought, well, if that report is somewhere here, it'd be nice to see it, so...
Your worship, I've never seen that before.
I've never seen it.
Never seen it, okay, all right.
Phone bill.
Um, and then I just had a couple of questions left over from our COW on finance, but you know what? Maybe I will ask those on Wednesday when we have our COW on finance. So I'll hold those. And now I'm done.
Well, as usual, I'm gonna go first from now on.
So you should.
I know, this logo, City of Roslin needs work. When it shrinks down for the business cards or whatever, the piano or...
Can I see it?
Oh, the piano, I hate it.
Well, let's change it then.
I know that, so I, simple motion...
You weren't even here when we had that conversation.
No, no, we had a, we had a committee that recommended it, that's why...
Yes, no, and I sat there and the commi, no, those weren't the ones that... Anyway, the whole vote went...
No, 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 Trey wasn't here.
Yeah, he wasn't here, I was material, but the whole...
I, I never wanted to discuss it.
It went sideways, the vote, for a reason, not because I was in the chair.
Simple motion to get Shelley, Shelley has some ideas that maybe she can tune that up, it might cost us some, some money, but quite frankly, if you want that on your business cards...
Well, let's go for the, the snowflake and the bike wheel, it was way nicer.
Well, let's just get some recommendations from Shelley.
Can we bring the four back?
I don't care what you do.
I'm the committee chair. We're gonna bring them back.
Okay, we, contact Shelley, okay.
Can I have a mover and a seconder for that?
I'll move it.
Just to get some further input, Tracy, right? Second or for that, sec, let me second that, will you?
Jody?
I'll second it.
Okay, moving right along, all in favor?
Yep.
Boz? Carried, all right, the other thing is the fire report, uh, which did notice, so did you address anything? Uh, I'm not gonna go into it right now, but I did ask that they put in the body of the report somewhere our concerns and how they're addressed in the report. And the report isn't finalized yet, so can't even talk about it yet, because they're still tuning it up.
Which report, sir?
Fire Service. Two-hour presentation by the consultants to tell us how wonderful the fire service is.
Glad I didn't go.
Okay, I need a motion that the remainder of the meeting on February twenty-fourth be closed with public pursuit of section ninety-one. I, leave advice in ninety-two, E, utter general vote of government of the committee charter with by Fisher, seconded by Spear, all in favor? Boz, carried. I'm taking a break.
Well, you, you guys can't, yeah, I mean, when I...
Two minutes.
Okay, so just Kathy, before you go, Jody, are you, are you guys interested in just meeting with Shelley and? No, you're not, you're too busy.
No, it's not because I'm too busy, it's because we already made a decision. Is it a decision or not?
Well, it doesn't work, so the decision doesn't work.
Well, maybe she can just figure out how to revamp that one.
She, you know, it needs a frame.
She knows, there's been some...